I move that the board convene in closed session in room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five parent one parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing with public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically, to wit school resource officers contract, the board will reconvene in open session at six P.M. pursuant to section nineteen point eight five parent two Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the special board meeting. The board may reconvene in closed session after the conclusion of the work sessions for such reasons noted in this posting in pursuant to a proper motion.
Sandy?
Meloni?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Sacker?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carried six zero will convene across the hall.
I moved that the board reconvene in open session pursuant to section nineteen point eighty-five parent two Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Sandy?
Meloni?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Sacker?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. So we have one more item on our special board meeting tonight, and I would entertain that motion. Does anybody have it here where you want to do it again? Third one.
I move that the district enter into an agreement with Impact Interactive to conduct dependent eligibility verification for active employee medical and dental plan participants as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Jean?
Yeah.
I assume you want to...
Just to recap some of the things that we've discussed in previous meetings, we the proposal would mean that we would contract with Impact Interactive, a consulting firm, for the cost of forty-one thousand five hundred dollars to conduct this verification which would run in conjunction with our open enrollment, which happens in May, and any individuals who would be found to be on the plan who wouldn't be qualified to be on the plan would be removed as of July first, which is the beginning of our our plan year. The savings that we anticipate varies from one hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred roughly to over half a million dollars. And as we clarified, we did look into whether or not we could do this internally, but the number of people that we would be reviewing, over three thousand people on our plan, or three thousand, you know, employee groups, people on our plan, would be too much for the human resources to do. And the employees who go into our system already have to verify their dependents, make sure that they're accurate, and they do a test at the end when they sign their new open enrollment that those are that everything is accurate.
Do they sign or do they just click?
They click a checkbox.
Okay, I guess it's just on deaf ears then, that that's there's a big difference between clicking a checkbox and having to take proactive effort and... Okay, I guess I can only say it so many times.
We looked at that, and we don't think that that's going to really gain the savings that we need, that people will simply click through. We also have a number of people, right, roughly sixty people never even went into the system last time, and we have no way of requiring that they do it. You know, you can't, you know, you can't require that they go into the system and do it, and so they just roll over into the next plan year with the same.
So we can require them to do an this intrusive search of personal records, but we can't require them to go into the computer to click the boxes?
Well, if they if they don't do this, and we find that they have dependents who we would we can't require them to do this, otherwise their dependents who they didn't validate would be found not able to be on the plan.
Jean, do you have any idea of why they sixty percent of people wouldn't have done that?
It's not sixty, it's sixty people.
Okay.
Not sixty percent.
Okay.
We don't know. I mean, we have we have several ways for people, they can come in and we can do one-on-one with them, we have groups that we hold, we'll talk to them over the phone, there's a call number that people can go in if they want to call and just step through it, it's done through our the company that we work with. There's there's lots, you know, different ways to help people, but I think sometimes people are perhaps busy, thinking that everything's the same and I don't need to change it. But we do want everybody to go in and validate, because sometimes you don't even know that something should be changed, like a beneficiary, for example.
Can you can you explain again, because there's a cost involved in this? It's forty-one thousand roughly, right?
Yes.
Can you explain how you know, or you're certain that you're gonna there's gonna be a savings, there's gonna be something as a result of this process?
Just just in the last two weeks, we happened upon two individuals going through a divorce, and their divorced spouses were still on plan. How we knew that, we we just found out through different means that the person...
Yeah, how do you know that?
Well, because sometimes they ask a question about something, sometimes they call and they tell you that they're planning, they have questions about a divorce, and then you look to see, you know, you just check. So it does happen.
So you're confident that there would be?
Mm-hmm. There'd be savings. And I'm not I'm not gonna say which end it's gonna be on, but let's just say even if it's in the middle, two fifty, three hundred thousand, you know, that's...
And I'm, I mean, kind of echoing Andrew on this, and I had said it prior, that I haven't heard anyone say to me that they would welcome this process, it was actually exactly the opposite, that they were, you know, feeling very uncomfortable, not with being truthful, it was about sending their information to essentially a third party. So that was the actual concern that was...
Sure.
And that is all I heard. I didn't hear that people were really excited to send their information to a third party at all.
Well, and that's why we clarified that the information such as social security numbers, the privacy information could be removed from the documents, they just need to see the document that verifies that that the person is entitled to be on the plan.
So there's can you so you can say that there's no way they're gonna have access to, do they have to, I mean, they won't have to provide that under any circumstance at all?
I'm not sure, Andrew.
The social security number, what you said would be removed?
The social security, they don't need social security numbers to do this.
Under any circumstance?
I can't say under any circumstance, because I don't know if it comes down to identifying a person with a similar name, if they would need anything like that.
So we can't actually guarantee that we wouldn't have to do that?
At this point, I couldn't guarantee that, absolutely not, but the company does this and respects people's privacy and is not interested in knowing information that they don't need to verify, the fact that they are a dependent.
I know, but I mean, and I hear you, but I think we all know that when we go to Target, we feel like we can slide our card through, and we're told that it's fine, and then we end up somebody in Tokyo taking our money.
Well, to the, I mean, they they have to comply with the SOC two, which is a high level of compliance for organizations that have privacy issues, privacy requirements. So that's that's the best I can tell you, is that they are compliant with all the requirements when they use electronic data. But, you know, I would say that your your data electronically is being sent many ways. Your data, when you register for your health plan, is electronic. Your we don't your your registration for your licenses for your education is electronic. Your transcripts come to us electronically. We get very little in paper anymore from anybody. Everything is considered is sent to us electronically. Doctors' notes come through fax, come they get scanned to us, private healthcare information daily. And we try we treat it with the utmost confidentiality, which is required, so sending information electronically is very commonplace.
But I think you make a point, though, when you say that we accept this, we accept this. The issue isn't that you're accepting it, it's that the third party's accepting it, that's the issue.
Right.
It's not that you're accepting it, it's the third party.
Yeah, and that's why we have a contract that that they have to maintain the same level of confidentiality. But, I mean, we we send all of the healthcare information when you register for your benefits, you're putting in healthcare information that goes electronically to a third party, which is UMR. Once it leaves, it doesn't it doesn't come to, I mean, we see it, but it goes to UMR, an insurance company, and all the claims come through electronically to a third party.
I think it's the audit, though, it's the it's the it's the intention, right?
Yes.
Sheldon, would you do something?
Yeah, I just, if I'm understanding this accurately, Jean, if if a person would be found to not have the right paperwork, or the right numbers, or what have you, their names would come forward to the district for further investigation.
Yes.
So it it screens and it identifies areas. You know, I think one of the things is we've talked through, and we talked a lot about if we did it internally, what would be the value, would we be able to garner the results that that you would expect or not expect, and it's hard to know. And the resource, certainly at our current state, we could not, it did not feel we could do a good job with it, so that's why we would go outside of this. I think that what it really boils down to, for where I sit, is is an opportunity or not and to to address issues that potentially we have that outsourced or outside folks have said are pretty commonplace across different organizations. So, again, we've never done this, if correct, externally, it is something that individual, I don't know who recommended it per se, but I know it was recommended to us to look more deeply at it, it's something that companies do all the time. And then it's just a question of if if the district has and the board has an appetite to go there.
Yes. And the the cost savings, as I said in in previous meetings, because we're doing it with open enrollment, we we will allow our some of our employees will remove dependents who are not eligible at that time, and we won't know why they took them off, and that's okay. But it won't garner you a precise number of people who came off the plan as a result of this, because people could do it at that time. And that helps people just, you know, do it without a lot of having to say, well, you know, this person shouldn't have been on the plan, they'll just come off and we won't know.
Can you talk about the hardship that you believe is gonna happen?
Ed had his hand up.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. You know, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and given what I've heard already, there's a couple of things I I'm convinced that if it's going to be done, it has to be done from an outside agency, that we don't have the capacity to do it effectively. I'm also convinced that it just in terms of stewardship to the public dollar, it should be done. When and how, I guess, is still kind of kind of rattling around in my head, anyway. I I do think that it looks draconian. My preference would be that the district be very, very clear about what the parameters are for what makes a person eligible and ineligible, and do a real good job of advertising that in the next year, and then perhaps look at doing this next year, giving everybody an opportunity to gather the documents that they're going to need to make sure that they don't have people on their plan who shouldn't be on there. Might be surprised, might find out that just putting that information out there in that manner is gonna garner a lot of savings. Again, I I think it should be done, but but I'd like to see it held off for another year, following a lot of of advertising and marketing about what has to be done, who's eligible, who's not, so...
Laura?
I'm just gonna push back a little bit on that. I'd like to see the savings now, we need it now. And also, can you just talk about when you in your discussions with the teachers' union, what feedback did you get from them about this?
I think it was similar questions to the questions that the board has asked, and I I would say that they did not come out in opposition to it, because I think they feel that they want to protect the integrity of the plan as well. I think they understand that it's important to keep costs down on the plan and cover as many people who qualify for the plan as possible. You know, I don't want to say for sure exactly how the GBA feels or the other union groups, but I haven't had a lot of pushback other than, you know, very good, solid questions, which we responded to in the Q and A that was put out in the staff scoop maybe last month. Thank you.
Rhonda?
Okay, so we talk about the savings, the whole discussion over the last six weeks about the benefits proposal, and that we needed the money, because there's a we have to plug a deficit that we believe is coming. So do you do you believe that this not doing this, and not even talking about the manpower hardship, but do you believe that this would? How badly do we need the savings? Laura says we need the savings now. Can you talk about why we need the savings now?
Well, I think that as we're doing our staffing now, we're looking to bring to the board a balanced budget in the fall, and right now, we aren't at that point. I think John Kasha provided the board, when we first started talking about benefits, with the the cost savings that we were looking at, actually, the reductions that we needed to make. And we're trying to maintain good staffing and hiring good staff, so we can maintain that, and so there are other ways that we are looking to capture some some savings, and this is one of them.
And I hear you, but I would say there are there are expenditures on on this agenda for us to approve. So are we looking for savings, or are we not?
We are.
So why are we being asked to spend money?
I'm not sure exactly.
On the other agenda items that...
You're asking where our priorities are.
Right, so we're actually being asked to spend, or not to vote on it tonight, but we're being asked to consider voting eventually in two weeks on some other agenda items. So I'm just kind of confused about, we need the savings now, and we have a balance or budget we need to balance, so I'm just confused about that.
I think I think we have to get down to the fact that we're not asking, we're saving money in the area of having people who do not belong on our plan removed from the plan, so that the people who are need to be covered can be covered, and we can keep the costs down.
But that's actually not my question, my question is, the savings have to happen, we need to balance the budget now, but we have expenditures on our on our agenda.
My understanding is the expenditures this evening are in this year's budget, we're talking about our savings for next year's budget and subsequent years. So there are two different things you're presenting here. The recommendation is to capture savings for next year and in the future. The expenditures that are being brought tonight, my understanding is, are coming out of this year's teaching and learning budget. That budget has been approved in the fiscal year ends June thirtieth, so they're two different, two different things. Is that is that clear?
It is clear, so but so you can say with certainty that everything we're being asked to actually approve of or consider for a vote eventually in in two weeks, this is something that we couldn't postpone? And, I mean, that doesn't happen?
Which ones? Which ones are you talking about? This year's fiscal year or next year?
Well, I'm asking about, so the the budget, I guess, deficit that you're talking about is next year.
Correct.
Right? So there but there's it's never happened where the board actually looked at an expenditure and said, you know, this isn't probably a priority, maybe we need to actually hold off on this. Is that money, then, does that money stay there, or does it disappear?
Good question. It would either be carried over in fund balance, but the problem with that would be we would not be aided on that money for next year's budget. So that means we lose fifty percent of that expenditure. It's not the same as a budget at home, where you just put it in the bank and carry it. We have, because of our funding formula, stipulations on expenditures from previous years, and we're subsequently aided on those dollars for the next year, which also helps mitigate our mill rate or brings it down, because if we get less aid, potentially our mill rate's going to increase. So expenditures for this year, it is important, I think, for the board to understand that those expenditures have a direct correlation to the aid that you receive in the future. And if we don't make those expenditures this year, it will lower that amount of aid for subsequent years.
Okay. Okay, I got a question. Yeah, and then I need to get that.
Just a point of clarification, this is more than just looking for a way to save money, it's looking for a way to spend our money correctly, that we're not paying for people who aren't legally eligible to be insured by our health insurance.
Yeah.
That's one thing. The other thing is, I know you're pushing to do this during the open enrollment, but legally, we can drop anyone from our policy anytime during the year, once they're deemed ineligible for coverage, right?
Yes, if we if we can show that they are ineligible, such as looking on the courts and saying that there was a divorce, yes, we can drop that person.
Okay.
And we do.
But can we, I mean, if we, I appreciate Ed's point in terms of the if we try to rush this to get this done in time for just the open enrollment period, are people gonna be scrambling to try and find the accurate documentation, and is that gonna be problematic? Or is this something that we can still propose to do during this calendar year, we don't have to wait an entire year, but allow let people know that this is coming, and we can allow some people to self to make corrections, self-select during the open enrollment period, give people adequate time to get the documentation, still go through the audit, recoup money still for this year, and the only thing is that it's not gonna be in a timely fashion in terms of staffing patterns and things like that for budgetary reasons.
Right.
But we can still recoup.
You could still do it at another time. We, you know, the the company tells us forty-five days is a very solid amount of time to give people a chance to get the documents, and in fact, we'd start communicating it this Friday in the staff scoop, so they actually would have more time in being made aware that, you know, we're going to do this. And so they would really have April, May, and into June to to start preparing for it. Plus, you know, we've talked about it at our meetings that we had with employees, so many of them are aware that it could happen. But the Impact Interactive tells us that giving people more time isn't going to increase your compliance. These are documents that people typically have when they have a dependent on the plan, like tax returns is one common thing.
And people will be instructed how to redact all the information that they don't need to release.
Yes, and there's a phone line that they can call that the company provides if they have troubles or have questions about it.
And then if somebody is truly stymied by the process, they would be able to contact our H R department?
Yes.
And you can?
Yes.
Coach them through the process?
Yes, we we may call the company on their behalf, you know, just to make sure we're giving them the the standard information that everybody gets, so that would be consistent. But yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Andrew and Ed?
So the the problem, the problem that I can't get past here as far as voting for this, and which also creates a problem for me in some kind of compromise where we would be voting for a delay, is I I really, I'm just really struggling with why we can't try a less intrusive, single sheet of paper where someone has to actively sign their name that this is true and correct, and that has to be, I mean, even if some temporary staff was involved or something, surely you could at least get through that for much less than forty thousand dollars. I mean, that's that's hundreds and hundreds of hours of of labor, right? I'm just, I would like us to try something less intrusive, and I've said that I would come back, and if we didn't see some savings and some change in numbers of dependents and things, that I would admit my mistake and come back next year. But if we delay this because we're not going to try internally, then I'm gonna be in the same spot next year, that we didn't try internally, and you're asking for a you're asking for a company to be used.
Ed?
Okay. Some of this is repetition, I know, but, you know, assuming honesty and good intentions, we would be realizing the suggested savings and and better spending by strongly by strongly communicating what those eligibility parameters are now, and advising employees right now that you need to make sure you are in line. I I think it will happen, I, you know, there may be those few individuals that are gonna roll the dice and say, I know that, you know, this person on my plan isn't eligible. I I've gotta believe that, again, communicating it very, very clearly, very, very strongly, not just the staff scoop, but getting that out there, letting people know this is what we need to do. People be honest and make sure that their plans are appropriate, and you will realize savings, so that's all I have to say on it.
Okay.
This time, anyway.
Michelle, I'm gonna get to...
Just a follow-up, and that's where I was headed, Ed, just around the the communication piece and the recognition of what is expected. I think that, you know, to make that an important, strong voice, I I would hate to say we're never gonna do it, because I think it goes right back to where you started at around stewardship. If, in fact, we start finding things and seeing things, I I think the communication piece is very important, and Jean, you and I have talked about this a long time, and that's why I know you were gonna say the company would tell you it's forty-five days, because we've had that conversation about what does it really take to get people in that mindset. I think that the timing is very good, right around the open enrollment period, to have this important conversation. The reality is, I don't think there's a single person who would support people on a plan that they aren't, you know, have access to, that, you know, other people are paying for, but on the flip side, there are also individuals who would feel that there are perhaps some folks that are on the plan that maybe even aren't as aware, or maybe there are some other alternative ways that they need to seek support for people that that they're caring for through this plan. I mean, I don't think that there's anybody who wants to cause cause harm to a child that's being supported, nor do I believe there's an employee who wants to cause harm to the district, so to be able to work through that. So that's why I appreciated that the company would afford the district that say as to who would be off the plan if they had a list of individuals, it wouldn't be all of a sudden they make that decision. So I think that to give it some real strong communication time would be certainly something, especially in light of what Katie said, if you can come back, if you're, you know, with that conversation around the importance of making sure that people who should be on the plan are on the plan.
I have a plane order for about this, but I can wait.
Rhonda was next, and then I'll go back to you, Andrew.
Okay.
Okay, so you stated that the expenditures that we have in front of us tonight are from last from this last budget.
Correct.
When is the cutoff of that?
June thirtieth is the end.
June thirtieth it is, okay.
Andrew?
So I'm, this might be a question for Melissa, we did, we, the board did vote last time to strike the reference to to Impact Interactive and the, which seems to imply that the district... and the, which seems to imply that the district is doing it in-house unless they come back and ask for the company again, which they are, which that motion has been made. If this motion fails, is the district still directed to do it? Because we've...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going to vote no. I think, I think I want to, I think I want to see us try. I would, I would be supportive of a request for resources if there was some temporary staff or something needed to make that happen. I'm not saying I expect it to be done, you know, for, for free, but my, my no vote is going to be in, in reflection. If, if, if we're, if we're voting to do it this year, if we're, if we're voting to proceed now, my vote will be no, which will be a vote for the current status quo, which is the district's been directed to try.
And what, and what in your, and what is it that, that you're thinking that the district is going to do specifically?
I think, I think they'd probably have to, I think they'd probably have to come back and let us know what that would look like. To me, trying could consist of a, of a paper, a testament that people sign physically, because again, that is different than clicking the boxes. It at least requires conscious thought to write down names of dependents and sign it. It could be as little as that. It could be the district feels that doing something with documents is, is a good idea. It could be the district deciding to maybe double-check some things in, in certain public records, but I think, I think I'd like, I think I would like it to be tried in-house before we commit to a company, which is, which is why I made that, I proposed that amendment last time.
So with that, with what Andrew described, and we already have, from what I understand, well, we had 60 people that don't fill out anything, even the clicking on the computer, they're automatically rolled over, is that, that's my understanding?
Correct.
So they continue to get health insurance?
Yes.
So, will, so, and now you're asking them to fill out a piece of paper, which may increase the number of people that I would guess don't do it? I mean, I don't know why...
I guess I would have to talk with, you know, Michelle and others in, in my department to see whether or not it's even feasible to, to fill out papers. That's all, that's a lot of paper.
Yeah.
And if...
It's about 1,500 pieces, it's about 1,000 pieces of paper.
How do you get somebody to turn something in when they don't even go in and enroll? What, what is, what is it that we...
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. What's the leverage?
What is the, or what is the, what do we say to people who simply don't do it?
Maybe come pick up, turn this in to pick up your check? I mean...
Well, we, we do direct deposit, we, and we don't withhold income from people.
Oh, not withhold income. Your, your checks here bring, bring this, I mean, but what we're going to do now, what's different with this company, the company, it's just the difference of who's going to shut the benefits off, right? Like a third-party company is going to tell the district, here's a list of people who we recommend showing your benefits off versus the...
Right.
District saying these are the people we couldn't verify. The difference is just you're getting someone else to do it for you.
That, that's true. And there seems, there's greater compliance sometimes when you do that. The only thing I could think of that would be is to do something within the open enrollment system, which would still be a click. They would not sign something. There could be something, a reminder...
Okay, I forget it if it's a click. I, I don't know, I mean, clicks are not, it's too easy to rush through the clicks, okay? So, I'm going to be really upset if this comes back with a new click, because, I mean, I can be outvoted on the issue of the click if the, if, if others think that that counts. At a minimum, you could have someone, I, certainly I've had things where I've had to type out my name as some kind of, you know, indication that I've actually read something, something. But I guess the, the bigger point, the bigger point is that I would, I would like us to try, I would like us to not subject people to this third-party company, and the third-party company, I'm sure cares about accuracy, but ultimately, in the end, their reputation is primarily on how much do they save. There, there is not, there's not that much incentive for a company to work, to go the extra second and third mile with someone to help them get their stuff in, and take, go the first extra mile, maybe, that's good customer service, but I just, I, I'm just concerned about, I, I don't like the, I, I would like, I would like to get the savings, and I think we can get it in a less draconian way than this third-party audit, and I guess if there's, I, I guess I would like the idea of waiting a year like, like Ed said, and making it clear that this could, that this is something the district will be considering, and seeing if that by itself causes people to self-audit more carefully.
That, that suggestion, I think, would be preferable than, than to have a paper process. I think if, if this isn't something that the board can prove today, then reminders and, you know, information about the importance of enrolling those dependents and who those dependents are would be preferable to, than to have a paper process whereby people may or may not turn it in, and I'm not sure what the requirement will be if they don't.
One thing that you could do with it, I mean, if you did decide you would want to consider a paper process, and it, obviously, it doesn't address hourly employees, but could it be an addendum or, or an, an extra page that goes along with the contracts? Everybody has to sign a contract, I shouldn't say everybody, but, you know, all professional employees have to sign a contract, and, I mean, those come in and...
They don't always.
What happens then, though? That's, that's a fair question. What happens then?
We sit on the phone and call people, and if they, if they simply don't come in, we simply keep them on and, and, yeah, I mean, we, they usually do, but we spend a lot of time...
I've had that, and...
We spend a lot of time.
They did not return, so...
Christine? That often, that's what usually happens, is they are going to resign, yes.
Yeah. Christina?
I, I think for me, the question is, it's a, it's a communications question. Have we been communicated in a way, because you've, you're saying that they're not responding? So, what has the language been that you've used, Jean? Is it, like, is it, are you telling them that if they don't submit these forms, that they're going to be kicked off?
No.
Okay, so...
I mean, we tell, we tell people that when, when it comes to open enrollment, they aren't, they aren't kicked off. So we tell, we ask them to go in and we tell them that if you don't, you'll stay on the same benefits you have.
Right.
And you, unless there's a life event or a qualifying event, they, they end up staying on. And every year, we have a few people who didn't do it, and they may have wanted to make changes, but, but then they can't.
So the question is then, if we decide to do an internal, you know, chance to see if people will self-select out, if we can change the language and to make it severe enough that they are actually following up compared to the rates we've had in the past? So do you think that's possible?
I think it's possible to use certain language to get people to do it, but I always think there's going to be a few people who don't, don't pay attention.
Well, historically, the rollover process has been in place...
Yes.
For years.
Right.
And legally, can you even say, can you take that away? Can you say it won't automatically rollover?
In a previous world, if you didn't go in, you got a very basic plan that, you, you didn't stand on the same plan, you got a very basic plan that gave you the minimal coverage, and you cert, you lost certain things, like you couldn't do your flex plan. So, here, I think the flex plan has to go away, so they do lose that, that's a, that's required, yeah. So it depends upon whatever the company's policy is as to what happens if you don't do open enrollment. And ours is to just keep the people on the plan as they have selected.
Their current plan.
Yeah.
We would have to make a policy change in that before we can try to impose any kind of, you need to do this or else, because there is no or else.
Yes, if it would, yes, and I, and I don't know that I'd want people to lose any level of healthcare coverage if they fail to turn it in.
Right, right. Our whole point is to just try to make certain that the people who are insuring are people who are eligible to be insured. And I think, you know, to try and do it, and you already told us to try and do it internally is going to be too labor-intensive for the existing department. It's going to be, we're going to be spending more money to do that, doing something that you're not as trained to do as the outside auditor. I just think that maybe it's, it's intrusive, but it's, it's done a lot of other places, and that's not the only reason we should do it, but if we can recoup anywhere between $100,000 to $500,000, that, for the cost of $40,000, it's at the very least going to be revenue-neutral or cost-neutral, and we could gain, and we could, we could set the baseline.
And we gain year over year, because these are people that potentially would have been on our plan five, six years.
Right, right. We're not covering them for another entire year and then doing it again, so I think it's, you know, it's, I just think it makes sense.
Ed, I have a question for you. When you talk about delaying and doing it next year, because I'm kind of in the same, I don't think it's worth doing internally, because it, it sounds like that's just labor-intensive and, and not our area of expertise. But if we were to delay it, I'm wondering what you see as the benefit of delaying it for a year? What's, what are your thinking on that?
Well, a couple of things come to mind. First of all, I, I think about some of the discussions that we've had with the, the needs that folks are going to have to gather the documentation, birth certificates, marriage licenses, all of that. I, I think for the majority of folks, it's probably not going to be a, a real big issue, but I, I know for others, it will be. I mean, I think about all the folks that lost everything in the recent flooding. You know, folks like that are going to have a heck of a time trying to find that. So, part of it is to give people adequate time to gather those documents. The other part of it is, I do believe if it were clearly communicated that these are the expectations around your insurance plan about making sure that the people who are on your plan are eligible, get it out there, I think those folks who, number one, may have people that are ineligible, we'll, we'll take them off, or number two, have people that should be eligible but for whom they don't have the documentation. You know, I'm taking care of my grandson, I'm taking care of my niece, what have you. I need to get that legal documentation because, you know, legally, morally, and ethically, she should be on there. We give them enough time to gather all of that. I think it's just a, you know, a more humane way to do it.
You're talking about like guardianship paperwork.
Guardianship paperwork, yeah.
If, if we were to, if we were to do it, say, for the first of the year, start messaging it out now, so people have six, greater than six months, so we would start the process and the call for the January 1st, 2020?
I think that'd be reasonable. I think that'd be reasonable.
Because... It would be with open enrollment, but at least if, people would have more time, and we could, we could still sign the agreement with Impact Interactive, and they would know that the plan would be to start in the fall with a January 1st deadline.
And, and maybe if you find out that, you know, by, by July 1st, that you've already looked at the possibility of saving half a million dollars, you may not need to do it at all.
Rhonda?
So I think it's important to remember that we're talking about employees who already are dealing with the reality that next year, they're going to be making less money because of the benefits proposal. So, I'm happy to hear that we're entertaining the idea of delaying this, because I think, to me personally, it is not worth adding to the morale issues that are already there because of the benefits proposal. I think we need to be really aware of, of what that looks and sounds like, because it's just piling on. You know, we gave them a raise, we took it away, and now we're going to ask them to go through an intrusive process, and I think if we're really and truly interested in making sure we are, are retaining teachers, aren't, are wanting to attract teacher workforce, this is something that I think there's a lot of risk involved to save $200,000. I, like, to Andrew's point, I think I'm hopeful that we could probably find that somewhere else. Is it worth it? I don't, I think it would be a disaster to do this right now, and I would be voting no on that as well. So I'm hoping we can delay it.
Why can't we do it in-house if you were authorized to bring in quality temporary staff or something of that nature to supplement? I understand that, I understand that staff is, is busy, and I didn't have some kind of fantasy that this would be free if we did it in-house. I, I think it should be doable.
I guess I'd have to take a, a look and talk with people who will be doing this. It, it will end up going, I, I, I'd be committing people to do it when I'm going to be here, and they will, I guess I'd want to talk with Michelle about that possibility and what staffing we would need to do it, and then the integrity of the process, too.
Just to be clear, I mean, asking staff to pay for the health insurance of people who shouldn't be on the plan, that's bad for morale, too, right? I mean, I, if I was an employee of the district, I wouldn't feel like that was fair.
And that did come up at some of the information meetings?
Yeah, it sure did. And some of the, some of the conversations I've had with people who are staff and teachers, they're like, yeah, do the audit.
Michelle?
I think that it, it goes back to, and I would offer, Jean, that, that I, and Mr. Becker, with, I, I'd like your thoughts on this, too. The, the communication is critical, and to leverage that communication in a pretty significant way has not been done in the past, and I can understand that that would be an important step first. And again, having enough time to think about this and enroll and understand what is expected is one piece. I think the plan moving forward is that we would have had enough window of time, but, but again, you know, we've gone back and forth on that discussion, so this is not something that hasn't really been part of what you and I have talked about significantly. I still go back to the fact that I, I think about, there's a reason this company exists, and I know that there's a lot going on right now in human resources around issues and things that need to be addressed that are very timely. Staffing, for example, is a very, very time, and then we're moving into the hiring process. And that's my concern about just capacity. I think we can bring people in from the outside, but having done that, sometimes we all know that there's a lot of oversight that would be needed and, and coming up with a plan and so forth. So, I don't know, Mr. Becker, if you would be amenable to, and others, for the consideration of moving forward with a pretty intensive communication piece to address this, and then coming back with an audit if nothing, you know, I...
You're saying like in January or something?
Well, I think it was put out there. I don't know who put that out there. I'm not even coming up with that. I just think an intense communication plan and then coming back to show what we're seeing.
You had mentioned commencing in fall and into January.
Yes, because I, I was responding to Ed's point that you, people need, may need time to secure the documents.
Right.
And this would give them that amount of time.
Right.
Knowing that it's coming, and...
And would still encourage people to self-select out.
Well, that's what I was going to say, too. We also could look at the data and see what, what we're saving.
Right.
Right? And then we can make a decision on whether or not, to your point, Ed, whether that contract would even be necessary.
Although the, although the, the data won't be necessarily conclusive, because we won't know for sure, you know?
You won't know.
I mean, we can see trends, but we won't, we can't say it was for this or that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Right.
But you were saying we wouldn't be able to anyways if we did this at the time of open enrollment?
That's correct.
Right, yeah.
You'd know some, but you wouldn't get...
And we'll, we'll know some this way, too, if the average dependence per family unit drops by, you know, .06 or something, we, we know.
Katie?
Can I offer a motion?
Yes, please.
Amendment?
Amendment, thank you. What's the word?
Wait, oh, yeah, amendment.
I move that the district enter into an agreement with Impact Interactive as needed to conduct a dependent eligibility verification for active employee medical and dental plan participants to commence fall of 2019 and conclude January of 2020. S, that's my amendment.
You stuck in and added...
You stuck in an as needed.
Well, in the event we end up getting...
Okay, so you did add that.
I did add an as needed, but it gives us the option to get the contract, but to also not engage in the contract if we don't need it, or would they not consider that? I can, I'm willing to take out my as needed.
Can you read it one more time, Katie? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Feel free to edit. I move that the district enter into an agreement with Impact Interactive as needed to conduct a dependent eligibility verification for active employee medical and dental plan participants to commence fall of two thousand and nineteen and conclude January of two thousand and twenty.
To a point that, that Andrew's made a couple of times, and it's a good point, I, I would also like to see in this motion, for, in the amendment, language that is very specific about requiring strong, frequent, explicit communication, as we've been talking about.
Right, that's implied in my as needed part.
I don't want to just imply, I want, I want, you know...
Okay, so where are we putting?
You can just add a sentence. You can just add a whole sentence, probably easier than making a run-on sentence.
Yeah, probably a separate sentence.
Just a whole separate sentence with that topic. Do you wanna give her some advice?
And it's expected that HR will...
One, one point is, is that by the motion, it does, we will enter into the contract, so there will be then the expenditure of dollars. I would imagine that they will require a down payment of some sort when we, when we do the contract with them, and so I'm not sure what the as needed means, but...
Well, how soon do you have to enter into the contract? Do you have to enter into the contract before fall of two thousand and nineteen?
I think we would enter, we would enter into the contract right away. Melissa would review it, we would sign it with the dates that are stipulated in the motion, and then the communication would be worked through Impact Interactive, so that, you know, if we want to start communicating the documents that people need, we would work with them using the language that they provide and send out emails. We, we typically don't do paper mailers to people's homes unless, you know, except for the retirees, but they aren't affected. So, we would do email communication to people, messaging it to the meetings we have with employees as we do, and, and start, start there with perhaps a monthly communication as well as the staffs. People, people read that. So, we would be entering into a contract, and then specifying that it would be entered, you know, the, the dates that we would do it, which would be, I think, fall, which gives us some latitude to December thirty first or January thirty first. I'm not sure what date you would wanna tell.
Well, she said January two thousand and twenty, so you'd have till the end of January.
Till the end of January to conclude.
So, you would try, you still try to get people to work through interactive right away, is what you're saying?
No, we would use them to, no, we would use them to help communicate the necessary documents, because that's not something I would be able to tell them. What, what do you need? Because it isn't, marriage licenses is a, the big one. I think it's more the tax returns.
Okay.
The marriage license doesn't...
Can we get that, I mean, we don't know what documents are necessary.
We have, yes, we do, we have a good idea.
If we don't enter into a contract with Impact, they're not going to help us prep for the audit, and then, and then we hope that we don't need the audit, because people have, we didn't owe their dependents. They, they're not gonna expend those resources and that time helping us prep for that without our contract in place that we're going to be retaining them for services.
What are, what are they gonna, what are they gonna say that's unique or special that our staff can't say?
Well, they know the process, we don't know the process.
Well, don't we know by now, when we by now know the list of documents?
We, we do, it's just that we're going to work with them to make sure that it, it's very clear and use the language that they want us to use, that they are gonna be sending out once we begin it, so that the employee knows, this is what you're going to need. So, instead of communicating it now, we'll, I mean, we'll start communicating it now, but we will wanna be consistent with whatever it is that they're going to have to turn in to the company.
What, what information you can redact, how, what those, the processes for transmitting that, those documents, those sorts of things.
We'll get, every time we send out a all-employee email, we get lots of questions that come back. I'll be, either myself or somebody else will be calling Impact Interactive to say, "Help us answer this question," because there will be questions that come up that we won't have the answers to, and, and we wanna provide them back to the employees, so there'll be that back and forth with the company, so that we are consistent with what it is that the employee will eventually provide.
It sounds like this plan is precluding any attempt to realize the savings by people having better communication with people and people making the necessary changes on their own without a firm, yet at the same time, we're saying that there is a, a great deal of optimism that the fact that we're going to a firm will cause people to voluntarily drop off without going to the firm.
Well, you, if you voluntarily take those people off your plan during open enrollment, you're not gonna then have to produce documents, so there will be less work of having to produce those documents than of people who you've taken off the plan. So, I, I think it works really simultaneously to the, the process of open enrollment and then the audit. You'll take those people off the plan, and then you'll have the audit, and if you've taken them off the plan, you're not gonna be producing documents for those individuals.
Ed?
I'm having trouble with, with coming up with the right words.
And I'm thinking, as long as, is there a way then to allow people to, in the circumstance that Ed brought up in terms of the flooding, things like that, to file for, ask for an extension? Or can we just say, we're gonna do it now, but we're not gonna conclude it until...
If you take it, if you take it up to January first, you know...
It would give you a, a big window.
Within the motion, I mean, if we put there the intent to do this, and that these, you know, we need to communicate to all of our employees the, the eligibility requirements and the types of documentation and proofs that are needed, and that this will be communicated to them on a, I don't know.
So, would they be willing to work with us from now until, for that same?
Yes, yes, with the idea that the audit, because we will be entering into the contract as soon as the language is approved through, through Melissa and the company. We'll sign the, sign it, and then we'll start working with them, and the contract will state when we will start the, actually start the audit, and when, you know, when the date will be that we'll conclude, or whatever the date, the language is in the contract.
So, we don't really need a communication clause if the communication's gonna start, do we?
Right.
Well, yeah, I, I, I would like to see that. I would like to see it voted on, it is, you know, that board action is demanding a communication plan.
Because a communication plan is gonna include a lot of things, it's gonna include that we're working with this company, we're doing the audit, it's also gonna include that people are welcome to come to HR for assistance, any assistance they might need, that people can simply, you know, when they do their enrollment during the open enrollment period, they can take care of things then. So, that, all of that communication needs to be. And then if we just, and no one's seconded my amendment, so it's easy for me to just rearrange it.
Just keep rearranging.
I'm just gonna keep arranging, so that it's, that we can do it to commence, okay. But you didn't come up with a communication statement?
I don't know, three things, I scratched everyone.
Okay, communication from HR will include...
Katie, would you like me to?
Please do.
The district will enter into an agreement which will include an extensive communication plan with Impact Interactive to conduct a dependent eligibility verification for active employee medical and dental plan participants to commence the fall two thousand and nineteen and conclude January two thousand and twenty as presented be approved.
But the commence part doesn't, we don't have to wait until the fall?
The actual audit, where people...
The actual audit, okay.
The actual audit that commence on the fall, previous to that.
Commence the communication immediately.
Immediately, yes. That would be under consideration.
With, with the audit to, to begin in the hall.
So moved, is my amendment.
But is that clear in the...
Yes, because it says to conduct a dependent eligibility verification for active employees, active employee medical and dental plan participants to commence fall two thousand and nineteen and conclude January two thousand and twenty. So, what's commencing is the eligibility verification. Is fall, it's just saying fall two thousand and nineteen, clear enough? I mean, there's...
Do you wanna give a date, September?
September first, two thousand and nineteen.
Sure, anybody wanna go to January thirty first, or January?
And January thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Do you want me to read it again?
I'm fine, go ahead.
That the district enter into an agreement which will include an extensive communication plan with Impact Interactive to conduct a dependent eligibility verification for active employee medical and dental plan participants to commence September one, two thousand and nineteen, and conclude January thirty one, two thousand and twenty as presented be approved.
And then somewhere in there, I don't know, it's a new sentence, or if it's a clause after that communication plan, it, it should say something about that communication plan beginning...
Right away.
Right away, I mean, you know, April fifteenth or what have you.
Which will include an immediate, an immediate extensive communication plan?
Yes.
The first communication will be just that we're gonna do it, because I would want to have a, a contract reviewed, signed, before we start to tell people what documents.
Right.
I have a good idea, Impact, Impact Interactive has given us the list, but I wanna make sure we have the signed contract before we do communication that they provided to us. So, we could start by saying, it's coming, you'll get more information, and then work through the frequency of it and, and the ways we'll do it.
And there would still be opportunity for people in the open enrollment period to...
Yes.
And do we have a second?
Not yet.
Second.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Jean.
I, I, I just wanna be sure, as we talk about the communication plan, that we're very clear to people right now that this is their opportunity to really reflect and review on what is eligible. That's the piece that I think is an important part of the communication.
Who's eligible?
That if I'm just clicking through or not clicking at all, or if I'm just not even looking at it, that whole conversation around eligibility isn't there. And that's what I think is really the critical part of this, and then the next step is to know what I'm supposed to produce. But at, right now, I have an opportunity to really think about who's eligible, and then if I'm carrying a child online that may not be qualifying, what can I do about it?
Right, who can you go to for help?
And maybe we put that on there somewhere.
We, we have, we have a packet that we send out to all employees, it's actually one of the things we do in, in paper form, but it's also online, and it's the enrollment guide, and we can put some of this information, because we haven't gone to print yet, waiting for this meeting, in that, in that enrollment guide, so that people know what, that it's coming, the dates, and so that they just know, and then we can stress who is eligible to be on your plan.
I have a question.
Christina?
Sorry, do we know how much these documents cost to obtain, if people have to get copies? Do we have a sense? Because that would be something of value, I think, to provide folks as well, so that they can prepare for a financial...
I think the cost is gonna be very depending upon where you go. I could, we could find out what birth certificates, for example, from county would, would cost.
But you can let people know that a tax return would have all your dependents on it with birth dates.
Prespoused tax return.
And you can redact any additional information from the tax.
I think that would be an important piece.
Yeah.
So, a tax return counts for spouse, but not for dependents?
I don't have any, depends on my...
Why wouldn't it? Because the date of birth of a dependent is...
I think they do, don't they?
Yeah.
Well, then why were we even, I guess, we were talking, but we were talking about, is it like a acceptable thing if you, if you make a hardship case about a birth certificate, then they'll think about the tax stuff, or is the tax stuff a primary option?
I don't know.
Because that's free. I mean, that is less...
Tax returns is one of the documents they listed, but I'm not sure if that would suffice the dependence.
We could also, we could also direct them that we accept tax returns as a first-line option, right? Because you don't have to, you can get, you can get a transcript of your, you can get an IRS transcript for, for free, or very, or next to nothing. It's, it's, you know, a, a portion of my worry here is about out-of-state, out-of-country birth certificates. I still have some unalleviated concerns. I, I have some other motions that I'll make if, if this passes, that I think will provide some important staff protections. I'll, I'm going to vote yes on the amendment, because if the main motion passes, it's less bad if it's delayed, but I still intend to vote no on the main motion, because I think the district, I, I, I think the, the motion made last month is that the, we were asked to try on our own, and I don't think that's been really looked into very much. If this is the first that, like, temper, high-quality temporary staff was even thought about, was tonight, then I don't know how, I, I think, I think there was never probably that serious of a, I, I think your, I think your mind was made up, probably, at the last meeting, when you said you didn't like the idea of doing it in-house, pretty much, and you gotta, you had some confirmatory conversations with your staff, and you're back here telling us you don't, you don't wanna do it, and I disagree. I think, I think we should try it in-house, try something in-house first, rather than lock it in with a, with a firm, but now it is getting pretty circular here, so...
Just, I'll, I'll be quick. So, but you're voting yes to delay. The delay, actually, it doesn't delay it from happening, it's gonna happen, it's just gonna happen later.
Right, but at least people have more time to get their documents together, so if, if, if the main motion's going to pass, I think it's less bad with the delay piece in it. I still wanna vote no to make the district do an in, to have attempted internally.
But that's not the motion on the floor.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna ask.
The motion is, is amendment to add the delay.
My amendment is the motion on the floor.
Right.
Just to amend the motion, it's not to pass the motion, so all we're voting right now is to amend the motion.
Right, I'm just confused by what you're saying, I guess.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes on the delay part, because if we do the audit, if the audit motion passes, I would rather have it with the September to January timetable, because that's less bad for people than the right now timetable.
Oh, than the original motion, I got it.
But the main motion, I, I still, I'm gonna vote no, because I wanna, I want to stick with the requirement to try it internally, so, see what happens.
Okay, so we're voting on an amendment that will become, that will replace the motion, so we're actually gonna vote twice on the same motion.
This is on the amendment.
Because the amendment is to replace the motion, got that? Okay.
Thank you.
It's in the nature of a substitute.
Yeah, so we're, okay, so take the roll call, Sandy.
George?
Aye.
Sidney, come on.
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye, carried seven zero. So, now we have a motion on the floor that's identical to what we just voted on, that already has been seconded, so is there any discussion before we vote on this motion? Rhonda?
Okay, so to your point about birth certificates that are out of the country, are we willing to accept that there might be people that actually cannot obtain those? Are we okay with that? I'm not. Because we know what that looks like in reality many times, and it is, if we vote for this, we're actually saying we are, because we can't guarantee that that won't happen, that there isn't someone out there that has a birth certificate that cannot be obtained from another country. And then what does that look like for their child? Are we okay with that? Are we willing to say yes to that? Or am I just off-base? Because I...
Yeah, a little.
Tell me why.
Well, because I'm not quite certain what you're asking. Are we okay with the fact that they can't, we, we have to accept the fact that they can't secure a birth certificate? And I'm okay with accepting the fact that they can't, and that's why they're going to work with alternative means.
Okay, but we, but alternative means, you know, these people aren't wizards, I'm sure, and, and we know what it's like with governments in other countries, which is why these people are here in the first place, right? Are we okay if that... Are we okay if that isn't obtainable? It's entirely possible that it could not be obtainable.
I think we have to be okay with that, you know. I don't know what the, I don't know what that list is going to be, but we've been talking about tax returns. Every employee is filing a tax return, and they are putting their dependents on there. And if the government's accepting that, that should be.
But we had a discussion about birth certificates.
Yeah, this is kind of the first time I'm hearing anything about the possibility that a tax return may be unacceptable.
They were mentioned.
You mentioned that. So there are also the immigration documents. We did, when we spoke with the company, they indicated immigration documents are acceptable. The only reason I think that a tax return would not show your dependents is if you're in a divorce situation and it's not your year to claim your child.
Right, exactly.
And then you will have, you'll have an immigration document, which is an acceptable form of documentation as well. And again, the individual is not removed until we decide they're removed. So we will work with the individuals with respect to, maybe it's a previous year's tax return that will show the dependents that are on that previous year, if that was your year to claim your children. So there are other alternatives. And again, you're not simply removed, it's the district who removes you.
You guys are the last stop, yeah, to ensure that no one is removed.
And the contract makes that very clear. I've already reviewed a draft of it. And they, it's their language that says it's not their decision to remove, it is the client's decision to remove any participants.
And I hear you, but I haven't read it. So I'm actually telling someone that I'm voting on something that I haven't set my own eyes on.
Well, Rhonda, for the very same reasons that the board has indicated why you would be hesitant to enter into the agreement, we feel the same way. We don't want to impact morale, we don't want teachers to leave. We want this to be the most fair, impartial process that there can be. And we will ensure that no one is removed from the plan without a fair process. And that is our role, and that is, I would be remiss to say that I would enter into some agreement that would be unfair to our employees. I would, I don't want that to happen. So we are being that voice and making sure that the process is fair and making sure that our employees and their dependents are protected and no one is removed without their being caused to do so.
And I hear you, but what I'm saying and what I'm hearing is we have, there's still a little discrepancy of documents. Well, they should be, well, they might be, well, what if there's this? And the fact is, we don't actually have the contract in front of us to read. So if somebody said to me, well, did you read the contract before you voted? And I'm going to have to say, actually, no, I didn't. And so when it comes to all the documents and all of the, you know, the conversation around that, we're kind of just lofting it around, but we don't really know, because we don't have the contract in front of us to say that that's actually, we know for certain, when we take this vote, that all of these documents are actually accepted for this audit.
Can we state what's accepted?
We determine what is accepted.
We determine what's accepted. So if we tell them tax returns are acceptable, then they're acceptable.
But again, we, like, we're part of the district. We're the board, right? It's our job to have oversight with what we are voting on. I haven't seen anything to say that I read it and it's listed, and I feel that that's actually, I'm certain with what it is.
Let's keep in mind the end result here. I mean, the ultimate thing is whether or not people are going to be able to stay on the insurance program. And that is going to be the decision here at Central Office. It's not that company's decision, it's not immigration's decision, it's nobody else's. So that's, to me, that's what we're voting on. Ultimately, it's going to be a decision that's made here, and I think it's been made very, very clear that the expectation is that we bend over backwards to make sure that people retain their eligibility.
Yes.
And may even become aware of people who aren't insured who are eligible, or know what to do to get them eligible.
But we're offering all this service and all this possible communication, but yet we're not really willing to do it. Like, that's where I'm just kind of, we're offering this, all this customer service and all of this communication that we say we're going to do, but at the end of the day, we're not willing to do it.
You mean do it internally?
Yes.
Yes, because it's huge amount of work.
It's a capacity issue.
And we simply don't have the ability to do it in-house. It's many documents, and it's reviewing the documents for, are they accurate? Are they acceptable? We just, you can't, it's not, it's not possible.
And I hear you, and I know we're trying to save two hundred thousand dollars. And I keep thinking back to the people that I've heard from. And so I'm trying to be a voice for those people, because I'm not hearing anyone else do that. So I'm hopeful that, at least by discussing it, that it's considered. Because I've heard from a lot of people that they are just not comfortable doing that, for various reasons. And some of the reasons they didn't want to get into personally, and I feel, we can tell them all day long that it's this, that, but we can't tell them how to feel about it.
All right, so there's a motion on the table. Take roll call, Sandy.
Warren?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
No.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikah?
No.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried five two.
I make a motion that, following the audit process, anyone, any employees removed from insurance have final right of appeal of the decision to the board.
That's a good one. Do you want?
That's a motion.
Second?
Yeah.
So this is, this just makes it crystal clear. I don't, that does, the motion doesn't say that the board is the only one who can decide, but it makes no doubt that at least we're saying that you can come to your elected officials as your right of appeal if you're denied.
Is there a second?
I have a question about that.
Did you say?
Katie did. Katie?
I did.
Quickly, I would add, sorry.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
But if there's a contract, there are terms in the contract.
Yeah, but they don't decide.
We make the final decision.
Contractor does not decide.
So he's saying, is it somebody?
Administration decides.
We could certainly build an appeal process.
But that could be built into the contract.
It wouldn't be built into the contract, it would be just something that we would afford our employees the ability to do. You know, and.
Okay, but that has to be somehow written out and.
The contract is just the service.
Removing them is not within the purview of that contract. That contractor has absolutely no say in whether or not somebody stays on the plan.
And that's not what I'm asking. So this is going to be somehow in a policy, or it's going to be?
It's going to be part of the communication that you do.
Because we've had.
In the process that they can.
The audit process and the end result that people have the right to.
But.
The difference, the difference is, and this is something I'm going to do consistently now, instead of, I think it's very likely that my idea would have had everyone in the room nod and say it's a good idea. Now it's, now it's going to be in the minutes.
And that's what I'm asking about, and that's why I'm asking, because there have been previous things where we all were like, yeah, it's great. And then it actually, it's null and void, because it was never written.
Yep, but this one is.
That's why we're voting.
It's the same as what we just said about having that communication plan occur immediately.
And that'll be shared with?
Be written in the process.
Part of the communication plan.
Right, right.
All right.
I'm going to call that question.
Okay, Sandy?
Sitnikah?
Yes.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. Anything else? Otherwise, entertain a motion to ensure the special meeting.
Don't be too hopes up, we're not leaving.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we will begin our work session. And first, all seven board members are present. We're also joined at the table to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. We have two intercity student council members here tonight. Owen Brennan, who's the vice president from Preble, and Jasmine Zaradi from East High School. Welcome. And also Sandy Heller, our board secretary, and members of superintendent's cabinet. Just a reminder that members of the public can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on Our District at the top, and then Board of Education on the left. And then on that left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. Next, we'll provide our community with two different opportunities to speak before the board tonight. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, which is next on our agenda, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibit the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members, are prohibited. At this point, I have one person who would like to speak before the board, and I'll call out Noah Becker.
Can cause feedback. I'm Noah Becker, I live at twelve fifty-four.
Can you tip your, it's not very loud.
I'm Noah Becker, better?
Better.
I'm Noah Becker, I live at twelve fifty-four Reed Street, and I'm talking tonight about the, about what I heard as proposed removal of advanced math courses in the district. Which sounds way worse than it is, so I'm about to explain that it's not all advanced math courses. The proposed changes that I am aware of and that I'm speaking to tonight are the removal of advanced algebra and advanced geometry from the district's course catalog as available options at the high school level. I am speaking against this, as, and I did a little research before I got here. The majority of students are not in favor of this, but the real thing that everyone I asked about this, including teachers and students, that they really got hung up on is, there's no proposed real reason why, and the actual sources of information have not been, have not been very reliable. We've had no real communication. It's been mostly informal dialogue with math teachers. There's been no announcement yet, despite the fact that such a huge course change is currently proposed. So that's why a lot of students are concerned, because it's kind of in limbo, and a lot of students would want clarification on, all right, are we doing this or not? Because as we understand it as students, the district is going to remove advanced algebra and advanced geometry for next year, despite the fact people have signed up for it already, because we've already had course signup. So that was one big problem. And if the district does move through with this, there are a lot of concerns that students and teachers had that we don't really know where to bring them, and I said, I know a place. So I have a sort of a litany of them here. So first is that it will affect other things besides math, if you take away advanced math courses. And if you do that, you will affect sciences, you will affect mostly science. A lot, all of the science teachers that I talked to, so that they'd be worried that advanced, that advanced students who would be taking chemistry or physics in sophomore year, is primarily what they were talking about, or freshman or even junior year, that they get a couple extra things in an advanced math course, and advanced geometry or advanced algebra versus just a regular algebra or regular geometry class. And they were worried that those, because there's such, there's a carryover into science, they were worried that students wouldn't have that when, in the science course. And they said that a lot of students are already struggling with math, and so they'd be worried about seeing any sort of topics being removed, especially in such a blanket fashion for students. Another thing is that a lot, there are, one thing that was said to me is that they would just teach all advanced algebra and advanced geometry classes, and they'd get rid of it, and then they'd teach the regular algebra and geometry classes to the advanced level by adding in the couple extra topics that you would cover in an advanced course currently. The problem with this is that Wes Algebra One fail rate is very high, and it's not for lack of trying on behalf of students. I've talked to people who have failed Algebra One, and it's not, it's not that, it's not that they don't try. They're good students. The problem is, they're coming in without the level of knowledge that they need to succeed in an Algebra One class. You can't do algebra if multiplication is still a struggle for you. You're going to have problems with algebra where you're, you know what I mean? It's a building block that they don't have. So by trying to teach up to the advanced level, that's more topics that you're trying to put, you're putting a lot more pressure on students that are already struggling to learn the class and to pass it as is at the current level of just regular Algebra One. There are no real advantages to doing this that I've seen, that I, it's, I haven't, as I said, I haven't had any really, really good communication about this. I've talked to a couple math teachers, but it hasn't been very well elaborated upon, because there's been no official communication from the district or from really anybody. So that's another big cause for concern with this. So I just, what I really want to do is bring before the board that if there are these changes, there are these last-minute changes to math classes, students should certainly know about it. And if they're going to happen, I would like to, I personally would propose a resolution statement at an ICSC meeting about them. And I just think that having that time for students to be able to act, or ask questions, or figure out what's going on, and kind of get themselves situated for next year would be really important for students to have.
I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
Noah, thanks for the information and the feedback for that. So other than coming to the board, have any students communicated this to anyone in the building?
I can't speak for anyone else. I don't, I know that there has been some dialogue, but I don't know if, I honestly can't answer that question. I don't know if anyone has talked. I do plan on talking to other people, the principal, myself, but I don't know if anyone else is.
Thanks.
Andrew?
I'd like to formally request this as a discussion and action item for the April fifteenth meeting. If I find out.
We don't have one on April.
Or twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
If I find out before the twenty-second that this isn't being done this year, I'll withdraw my request, but I'm just going to go ahead and just make that request. And this will be something that will be obviously time-sensitive in nature. I think there's, because course selection has happened.
What are you asking for?
This to be an action agenda item on the twenty-second. Unless it's not happening, then I will withdraw my request.
I think, I don't know if I can say this, but I'm going to just say it real fast. Mr. Magus is not here tonight, but I believe he can provide the board with a response and then be available on the twenty-second as well, to bring that forward.
Okay. All right.
If the board.
Thanks, Noah. You sat down before I was done, thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
All right. Let's see. All right, next, we'll move on to our agenda, and first is teaching and learning work session, and that'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have three discussion items. The first one is mental wellness framework, building healthy minds.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney.
Thank you.
I'm joined tonight for this portion by Christina Jingle, social worker liaison, who's probably familiar to all of you. Katie, want you to?
Is this everyone that you have? Is there anyone else in the audience that's here for this presentation?
Not for this one.
Okay. All right.
Those are the next two.
All right.
And Katie Devillers, associate director of people services. Timely presentation, last Friday, Dr. Warren, Ms. Hendrickson, and I attended the Wisconsin Mental Health Summit at Saint Norbert College. And before I turn it over to these two, wanted to toss out some information that we learned at the summit. I left there, I don't know, Dr. Warren, how you felt leaving there. Part of me was very depressed, no pun at all intended, at the state of Wisconsin, in dealing with mental health. I'll share with you some stats for that. And even nationwide, for example, when they're talking about child psychiatrists, sixty-five percent of all child psychiatrists across the nation are fifty-five years old or older. We aren't able to keep up with the demand, and people aren't going into that field. The state of Wisconsin, the Kaiser study, studied in the white paper, Wisconsin is only meeting about twenty percent of the state's mental health needs. We are ranked forty-ninth out of all fifty states in dealing with mental health concerns. That's not just for youth, that's for adults as well. Our suicide rate in the state of Wisconsin has gone up twenty-seven percent since the nineteen nineties. I thought it was. I thought it was bad back then. It's worse today. And we rank the state of Wisconsin 42nd in the nation for youth access to mental health care. There's more that maybe Dr. Warren would want to share as well. State of Wisconsin attempted to address it last year with a competitive grant worth $3.25 million. The sad part about that is it was competitive. We support that all schools, all districts in the state of Wisconsin receive access to funds to help support this cause. We were fortunate enough to be recipients of the grant, which Christina will talk about in a little while. But again, our thought is that all kids matter in the state of Wisconsin. Part of that included, and we're really excited to see it, reimbursement for some social work time. I remember talking to Christina when that was first announced. Well, last week, we found out we got how much back? Twenty...$26,000. That's not even close to an FTE. So depressed when I was hearing all the stats. Hopeful, because Governor Evers, in his budget, is really addressing this. Expanding Medicare is gonna help us a lot, increasing reimbursement. And what I want to really get at prior to turning this over is that this is bigger than a district issue. You're going to hear the things that we have in place in this district, and I'm really proud of the work these two and all the social workers, counselors, nurses, and school psychs have done. They're doing their job in addressing this, but one thing that really stood out to me from Friday that was said by one of the speakers, "It's not our job as educators to diagnose or treat mental illness." Despite that, schools are now the de facto mental health providers. It's unfair. We're not qualified. We're not equipped to deal with the mental health crisis that's happening right now in our nation and in our community. But I think what you'll see that we have in place is at least a stepping stone towards providing support to our students. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the ladies.
Thank you. It's really a truly a pleasure to be back with you guys tonight and be able to just briefly touch upon the robust programming that we do have available in our district to really meet the mental health needs of our students. I did...that was way better data than I'm going to share, but I did want to start with the same in terms of really kind of setting the stage and demonstrating the prevalence of the issue, the concerns, and the need for mental health services. Can you just click on that for me, Lori, on that link? Thank you. So this is from our National Alliance of Mental Illness. And just a couple of these data points that I really want to bring your attention to, if you could scroll back to the top, please, is that 20%... 20% of our youth ages 13 to 18 live with a mental health condition. And I just think about that 20% and the number of students in our district that that equates to, and that really drives home our point about really the prevalence and the capacity to meet the needs of our students. And then that other piece down there in terms of the impact, 50%... so when we think about our academic implications, 50% of our...the 50% of students age 14 and older with a mental health illness are gonna drop out of high school. 50%! That's half of our kids that we know have a mental illness are not gonna graduate. And then you can see this in terms of the suicide. It talks about suicide being the third-leading cause of death with youth ages 10 to 24. Actually, Wisconsin fares worse. We...in Wisconsin, we are the second-leading cause of death for our children aged 10 to 24. And also, I really want to drive home the point, looking at that age range, 10, we're talking about 10-year-olds. And we're definitely seeing a rise in that trend with higher rates of our really young youth having significant mental health concerns. Thank you. So that's some national data, but our district really...really through our continuous improvement process has several sources of internal data that we also utilize to really assist us with making data-driven decisions. So some of those sources include our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, our School Climate Survey, and then the data that we collect from Infinite Campus that we use in our learning support teams, which is that structured process that we're looking...really looking at that data to drive those decisions and help us support our students. That one went a little bit fast. So I'm gonna talk a lot in this presentation about recently released resources from DPI, because this has been a boom recently, as of late, over the last couple of years. Prior to that, we really had limited resources. So this has been kind of fast-paced as our district in really kind of keeping abreast of all the new information and determining how to best integrate that into our systems. But this was released a couple of years ago. This is the Wisconsin School Mental Health Framework, and this framework is going to serve as the structure to provide the content for the presentation tonight. So we have several initiatives that transcend all three levels of that framework. And the first one I'm gonna talk about is trauma-sensitive schools. I'm really proud to say that our district was one of the first in our area to really embark upon the journey of becoming a trauma-sensitive district. We started in 2013. We were just on the cusp of hearing about trauma-sensitive schools, and we have really made great gains in over those six years. So most recently, our district has participated in a Train the Trainer, which is allowing for internal staff to receive the training and to be able to deliver that professional learning rather than relying on a consultant to come in every time. And so we've really been able to do that, to really build our capacity and our sustainability. We also are gonna be able to leverage some grant dollars, where we're gonna be able to even further build capacity of staff to serve in that role and to participate as the Train the Trainer at the building level, which is gonna provide an ability to not be able to just have district personnel come in and provide the training for the staff, but it's gonna be somebody that they know, that they feel comfortable with, that knows the needs of their building, and is gonna be able to provide that training on an ongoing basis to promote that learning that's really necessary for that change to occur. As part of the trauma-sensitive schools, lots of classes now have safe spaces, which is essentially a space in the classroom that is taught for students if they need some separation just to self-regulate. It really is nice because it enables students to proactively seek out that space that might be necessary if they're feeling overstimulated or they just need some quiet space. But it also allows them to stay in the classroom, stay engaged, continue to get exposed to that learning that's happening in the classroom setting. Some of our schools have also been able to identify separate spaces, and we're calling them mindfulness rooms. They're kind of called different things. But within the space is really...is really kind of a more structured process for those students who may need a little more individualized support with that regulation. And just another complimentary strategy, that there's been a lot of attention garnered for mindfulness practices. Certainly, our district, both students and staff are practicing mindfulness. We have been partnering with a community partner who is offering capacity-building classes for our staff because we understand that staff need to understand the importance and the effective of mindfulness, rather than just teaching it to students and not really valuing that. We want them to do that from a place of authenticity. So we've been able to offer those capacity-building classes as well as supporting teachers with like direct practical application of mindfulness in the classroom setting. Restorative Practices is another one of those initiatives that really offers a continuum of supports, from informal to formal supports. Many, many schools are using classroom circles, and this is really a strategy that is really critical to building and enhancing those relationships that we hear over and over again about the importance of the relationships and really producing those positive outcomes for our students. And then at the other end of that continuum is formal conferencing. And formal conferencing is happening when we have students reintegrating into school systems, potentially after they've been suspended. Sometimes they're in alternative placements. It's a highly structured process that allows for all the participants' voices to be heard, validated, and it's really crucial to supporting that smooth transition back and helpful in reducing incidence of recidivism. We want to make sure we're keeping students in our schools. The other thing for our Green Bay School District, we understand that our diversity is one of our greatest assets. And so what we've really been striving to do is embed culturally responsive practices into our everyday interactions with our students, our parents, and our staffs. It's not a standalone. It's not a delivery. It's about the everyday interactions. And then, of course, our multi-level systems of support. And our PBIS is our framework to provide that methodical system to positively support our students in terms of behavioral supports. And although these initiatives are distinct initiatives, they're aligned and complementary of each other. So just to kind of give you an example, as staff start to increasingly understand the impact of trauma on brain development and how that could potentially be manifested in their behaviors, as they start to form their response to that behavior in terms of their PBIS, they may be able to understand that that may require maybe reteaching versus assuming that students have or possess certain skills and knowledge based on their developmental age. So when thinking about strategies at the universal level, there's numerous strategies that we employ at this level. And Green Bay schools really strive to create welcoming and inviting environments. And I'm glad that we have a Preble student here. I had the privilege of working at Preble for several years. And just a thing that popped in my mind as I was thinking about this, if you've ever been at Preble, you cannot miss all the flags that hang from the ceiling. And what that was is an initiative to just make our students that are attending that school from different countries feel welcomed and invited. And there are countries...there are countries...flags from countries all over the world hanging in Preble School. That can be really impactful for our students and families' engagement. We also have social workers who comprise a work group that, as I talked about, it has been fast and furious with resources and information coming out. So that work group is really responsible for keeping apprised of the best practices and then creating systems and integrating those best practices within our district. So an example of that is it's been a huge movement around caregiver capacity. We understand the need to take care of our staff. If we don't take care of our staff, the staff can't take care of our students. We understand that. And so from that perspective, the work group created a self-care menu. And the purpose was, is it was something easy for schools to pick up. We want to support schools. It's easy for them. It can be replicated and provides consistency with implementation. A newly released tool is the Compassion Resilience Toolkit. So just coming up in May, there's gonna be some work group members who are gonna be participating in that Train the Trainer as well and really trying to gather information and determine how that can be integrated into our existing efforts as we really continue to endeavor to ensure that staff are expressing compassion satisfaction. That's the goal we're seeking to achieve. Yes.
Christina, a quick question.
Stop me, please, 'cause I'll keep going if you don't stop me.
You're doing such a wonderful job. And I might have missed this. Did you...can you talk a little bit about who is in that work group? Is it the social workers?
It is.
Okay.
So the work...social workers currently have an infrastructure of different work groups.
Okay.
We have six different work groups, and social workers can determine which work group that they choose to participate in based on their...based on their passion. So these are social workers who have expressed that interest.
That's really...I love that. And then how...is that work group then...or how is that work group then connecting like to the district's system to provide those recommendations? And maybe we work with Jean in HR about employee wellness.
So that's one of the things that we have done. We're also currently working on, and I'm gonna kind of get to that, as these things have been coming out, there's a new resource, the Mental Health Screening Resource. So we're gonna be looking at that resource as we think about screening to promote early identification of our students. It's coming.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped the gun. No, you keep going.
That's okay. That's okay.
Can I ask...can you tell me a little bit more about what Compassion Resilience is?
So what it is, is that what we're striving to do with our staff is that we created...what we did is we took some existing tools, and we created just little snippets aligned...so January, it might be... we know about people are always doing like New Year's Eve resolutions about physical health. So we took some things around physical health, and we created just a very small slide. And it's about then partnering, so the social workers had a buddy, is what we did. We piloted it with social workers. And so then we had a buddy. So if Katie and I were buddies, we'd be like, "Hey, buddy, did you...did you do your caregiver capacity, your physical activity?" And so it wasn't just about the delivery of the content, but it was also about that relationship with your designated buddy. And it wasn't about shaming if you didn't do it, because, believe me, there was lots of times I didn't do it. But it was just about encouragement and kind of making it fun.
So that's the caregiver capacity?
Mm-hmm.
Then so then the compassion...compassion resilience...
Compassion Resilience Toolkit, we're gonna go learn more about. But how we're measuring that is a standardized tool. It's called the ProQual. And that's part of the trauma-sensitive modules. And what...and the continuum there is the compassion...is burnout, which, of course, we want to prevent. And the top of that hierarchy is what's referred to as compassion satisfaction.
So the resilience is the protection against burnout?
Right.
Creating those strategies to prevent yourself from...
Correct.
...hitting burnout. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. So we're really fortunate, too, that in our district we have representation of numerous community-based coalitions, which I didn't list all of those on here in the interest of time. But I did want to highlight the efforts occurring with the Brown County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And specifically, a subcommittee of that coalition is our Youth Initiatives Subcommittee. And what we have done is we merged a couple of different resources. We merged the Parent Cafe model. It's an evidence-based model. And we took another application, Text Talk Act, which we used with some of our students, and we created Table Talk. And essentially, what this event is, it's about parents supporting parents. So it's not about traditional methods of them receiving information from a mental health provider. It's really designed to reduce stigma around mental health with parents supporting parents. And so what we're doing with our mental health grant that Vicky had referenced earlier is we've been actively partnering with Casa Alba and Comsa, which has been such a rewarding and learning process for me. I just can't say enough about that. But what we're going to be doing is we're gonna be replicating that but putting a different slant on some of it in supporting our Spanish-speaking and our Somali families. So those events are coming up. Our Hispanic event, I believe, is April 11th. I can get back to you with specific dates. And then for our Somali-speaking families, it will be in May. So that's been a really...just a really wonderful process that we've embarked on this year. And then, of course, our Student Services Department. We are just so fortunate to have a multidisciplinary Student Services Department, and I certainly wanted to recognize everybody. And each discipline possesses that unique skill set, which is just so critical to supporting the needs of our students and making sure that they're healthy, physically healthy and mentally healthy as we know those two are closely interrelated. And just continuing on to talk about our universal practices and our health education curriculum, I just cannot talk enough about that as well, about how wonderful that curriculum is. They talk about a vast array of topics ranging from depression. They talk about anger management. They talk about suicide and bullying prevention. Also, Student Services get the opportunity to go in and conduct classroom presentations. And that is just also a really great opportunity 'cause it serves the dual purpose of us being able to supplement some of that content being taught, but also start to build those connections with students. And so those students knows our...know our faces. And so if they need help, it starts to...it enhances their comfort level in coming to seek us out. And I just want to share just a really quick story, because I was at Southwest today and got the opportunity to go in and present... conduct classroom presentations. It was a student I had seen previously. We talked about a number of things, including glasses. I could see that he was squinting, that there was some concern. He assured me he had a vision exam coming up, you know? So I see him today, and I see he's wearing broken glasses. So immediately, I was able then to reach out to his mom and find out mom had a change in job, lost insurance, kind of in that gap right now. They're applying for medical assistance, but trying to work their way through that process. So I was able to have a really productive and just pleasant conversation with that mom and talk about how we can link her with resources to get the student glasses. and talk about how we can link her with resources to get the student glasses, which are necessary for learning. And I don't want him running around with a pair of broken glasses in school. So that is just one, just example of like classroom presentations and the multitude of purposes that they can serve. We also use a cross-peer model approach for delivery of the evidence-based program signs of suicide. We've been doing this for years. We identify student peer leaders. We convene peer leaders from all four high schools at the onset of the school year, which is very powerful for them to see all the different peer leaders from all schools, not just their own school setting. And we provide training and then support of delivery of that content, primarily in the health classrooms for our grades six, eight and nine. And that has been really impactful, because I can tell you, students are much more receptive to the information when delivered from their peers versus when it's being delivered from me. So that's been a great, that's been a great program for our district. And what we also talk about when we go in and do those classroom presentations is who is your trusted adult? Who can you go to for help? And what we know many, many times, our youth are saying, teachers, coaches, student service personnel, paraprofessionals, food service people, I mean, they're the gamut of people that they can access in the school setting. So it's really imperative for all of our staff to also have that knowledge base about warning signs and if there's concerns, what to do. So annually, we had been providing a training, but as of last year, DPI released a gatekeeper training that we were able to use safe schools and make sure that all of our staff now are also receiving that gatekeeper training. We're going to do that every other year as part of our continuous improvement process. So moving on to the, in terms of the tier framework approach, to tier two supports. Student services provide short-term counseling, but there are certainly those circumstances that arise where students require that higher level of need that necessitates our linkage to our community resources. And although psychologists and psychiatrists in our community can be limited, I really feel fortunate to live in Brown County and feel like that we really can be a resource-rich community. And part of the way to really keep abreast of all those different resources is we've used a couple of different formats over the years, including a mental health resource fair and then brief presentations that are conducted by our community partners. And that really is efficient way to disseminate information that builds our knowledge base that's necessary for that seamless referral pathway to our mental health services for our students and our families. And then another tool that we're using on more of a dyadic kind of relationship with our students is the emotional regulation plans. Can you click on that one for me, Lori? I just want to show you quick, that you'll be able to see the emotional regulation plans. There, if you can scroll down for me, there's three different versions. For the, so they're developmentally appropriate for students K through our secondary students. And the usefulness of these regulation plans is really about teaching students skills that they can use to, to regulate and then to cope with incidents that can occur both in the school, in home and in their community settings. If you can go back for me now, Lori. Thank you. And oftentimes, these emotion regulation plans are accompanied with explicit instruction about how to use different sensory tools that are really based on sensory inventory of our students. The other one, I touched briefly upon the need of self-care for our staff, but that's also critically important for our students. So if you can click on that one for me too, Lori. And again, this is just came out as of, I believe it was a year ago. So you can see the wealth of resources that have come out in a short amount of time. But this can be a really great guide and instrumental in helping us support students and really being considerate about how do they proactively take care of themselves? Let's don't wait until their stress accumulates and it happens to be, become into a crisis situation. Let's be proactive about that. Okay. Thank you. All of these tools and resources are extremely effective when also utilized in small group formats. And there's a wide array of small groups being currently facilitated in our district. Just to kind of name a few, we have, we have groups around anxiety management, healthy relationships, zones of regulation. So we have a wide array of groups that are happening as well. And although that individual support is really, it can be really powerful, I can tell you when I facilitated groups, students are so excited to participate. When is our next group? And I have to sometimes let them know that, you know, that we will get there. Be patient with me. But students really get great benefit out of that small group setting. What, oh my gosh, hold on. I think I'm going a little quickly here. Okay. I'm struggling. So moving on to our tier, our tier three strategies. And again, when you look at that mental health framework, this is the top. This is the strategies that are going to impact our fewest number of students, but those with the highest level of need. So really thinking about student services personnel in our buildings, they're able to quickly and effectively respond to crisis situations. For example, if we have students that are expressing suicidal ideation, having somebody on site to be able to engage with that student immediately and start processing and creating that safety plan is critically important. Our district also has community connections, which is comprised of district personnel and again, our community partners. And it's really about that next tier after schools have done, have tried a number of other resources at the other levels. It really serves as a platform to provide for problem-solving venue to really think about other resources that may not have been tapped into. And we also are really actively participating in the Connections for Mental Wellness, which is a really innovative approach that I don't know that any community, other community can say that they have. It's really a community-based consortium that's comprised of mental health providers and school districts that are collaboratively working together to increase the access of mental health services for our students. Because Vicky talked about that. Access is a huge issue and a barrier for our students. So this is about removing that barrier to ensure our students are getting the services that they need. And currently in our district, we have six schools that are offering school-based mental health. And that is a result of our partnerships that we've, that we formed with the partners identified on the slide. And then of course, we have Dr. Rosenmanoka Hill School, which again, I think this is really innovative for our district and is designed to meet the needs of those students who aren't finding success in the traditional school settings, oftentimes due to a mental health concern or a co-occurring condition. And then understanding when students require that highest level of treatment, when they're requiring inpatient hospitalization due to safety concerns. We want to make sure that we wrap our arms around when those students are coming back. That window of time is crucial. So what we have done is we've created a consistent reentry process where we sit down with our students and our parents and really that their voice and their input is highly considered, if not the most important consideration in development of that plan and collaboration with our community partners to really provide that continuum of care. And then lastly, our continuous improvement process, where we never are stagnant in our district, always looking to improve. And I kind of had touched upon this with the new recently released guide. We're really going to be delving into that and looking about screening, which screening will assist us in proactively identifying students and really being able to promote early interventions. Because we know the earlier we can intervene, the better outcomes that we're going to have. We're also going to be looking at this school health, this is a mouthful, School Health Assessment and Performance Evaluation System, SHAPE is the acronym. But this is a mechanism that will allow us to identify gaps in services as well as create this cohesive systematic approach that's necessary for meeting the mental health needs of our students. We also have a team that is, has been working really hard for the significant undertaking of identifying a district-level social-emotional curriculum, which is going to be huge, because that is going to be so complimentary of our, to meet the mental health services of our students. And so I'm really looking forward to that. And then lastly, I just want to talk about that we've been able to participate in what we call is the Mental Health Navigator Summit. It kind of started organically through partnerships that we've made over the years. And it involves now Brown County and Fox Valley. We're preparing for our Mental Health Summit number two. We had the first annual at the beginning of the year and now we're having our number two at the end of the year. And essentially, that's a sharing of resources and ideas around mental health. And that collaboration is just, provides efficiency and really a way to garner information that can't be obtained through other methodologies, such as looking at websites to try to determine if that's a good fit for your district. And I just want to say that's just, that model is just so powerful and really lends to the fact of working together as a team. And just as Vicky had identified earlier, addressing the mental health needs of the students isn't up to the experts in our community. This is really something that we all play a critical role in.
That's the update.
Questions?
Can I ask a quick question?
You may.
Christina, have you guys taken the School Health Index through the CDC? Because that has a module for mental health, but then it links it to the whole school, whole community, whole child model. So you can see comprehensively how all the pieces fit.
No, we have not done that. And I'm wondering if that's part of this shape that we're going to be investigating. It sounds familiar.
Yeah, so we should talk about that.
Let's do.
Because as we talked about the wellness policy a month ago, this should all be integrated into that policy so that we can ensure that everything is coordinated and at the systems level.
So I'm working on the AOD grant right now. Where that is going to be one of my goals, is to work on that.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah?
Andrew?
So I'm glad to hear that you have the anti-suicide peer, peer leaders. That's actually, that's actually why thirty years later I'm sitting here is because the program that was then associated with Teen Institute, which is now, now exists as Operation Snowball, was a, and a weekend training retreat for students who would be involved in those types of activities. And so we're having, we do a fall and a, a spring event. And hopefully, we'll have a chance to talk about that. There is some time before the next one, which is in, in May. It's, yes, it is in the end of the year, but it can be a good, I think, capstone. And it's not only for students who might be in that type of leadership. It definitely would, and I actually ran because that was cut way back when. So I'm glad to see that we're doing more with that one. Just one question I have is, are there opportunities for students who may have a, have someone lined up for like a counselor to meet with them in the, in the school, meet with them after school or something, if it's an easier way to get a provider and student together than them having to find an office?
Well, for our school-based mental health providers, we have memorandums of understanding. It's a formal process that we have in place. We do have, and that's really through a structured process, what we're looking at doing. Because our person, our community providers do not have the capacity either to meet the needs of all of our students. So what we're really working on doing is creating a process of working our way through that tier one, tier two intervention and ensuring that we have referred the right students to that service. But if a community provider said that I'm working with Christina and I want to come into the school setting and work with her, then we do have some structures in place, because we want to ensure students are also there to learn. So we don't want to be removing them from their instruction. So can we look at doing that maybe during unstructured times? So that's one of the things that we are working on.
So like even at like after school? I mean, if, you know, if you get a call from a provider and we have, you know, a student has a counselor, but it's just a lot easier if they could meet at three thirty, can we use a room? Are we finding them a room in that case?
I don't know that we've ever had that request, but, so I can't say that for certain. And I think that what we would want to do, ensure that we have connected with that parent as well. Are you aware that this provider is coming in and make sure that the parent is, is aware of that service as well? And I don't, we certainly don't want to put up any barriers, but we want to make sure that we have a consistent process.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda?
Um, sorry, actually. I forgot I wasn't in control. You mentioned the grant. Why was, I'm going to call on Rhonda.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I saw you doing that.
I know, and I forgot you were in charge of this part of the meeting. But I will ask a quick question.
Okay.
The grant money, you said we got a grant from DBI. What, what did we use that grant money for?
The mental health grant?
Yeah.
That's the one where we're engaging with our Spanish-speaking family and our Somali families. That's the focus of the mental health grant. And again, that was based on data and understanding those two populations that, that we really want to focus on the reduction of stigma and access of services for those two particular populations.
And it, it wasn't a large amount as compared to what need is, correct?
Absolutely.
Do you recall what the grant, how much it was?
Forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine thousand. Thank you.
Rhonda?
Okay. Thank you so much for all your work that you're doing. It's, I know, we all know how important it is. It's, I think it's getting harder and harder for kids to be in school. And hearing your numbers actually is really shocking and, ugh, right? But looking through all this and thinking about everything and, and hearing from people and over the last few months, doing some research, recognizing that if we're not paying attention to what the environments we're putting our staff and students into, then we could be just triggering them constantly, right? With less access to mental health care, with, we can't really, you know, we can't change what's happening at home. They come to school. And this isn't, this is just something I want to mention, because I, I think we need to really think about how committed we are to our mental health issues that we are having in the school district. Are we really committed to the environments that we are, are asking our students and our staff to be in every day? Are we, are we recognizing that class size makes a huge difference with how students and staff are feeling? And this isn't just me saying it, going on Google, I'm hearing from staff on a regular basis in the last few months especially, as well as students that are in my own home sometimes, who are middle school students of my, my daughter. And she says the same thing, that, you know, when we talk about safe spaces in classrooms and sometimes there are thirty kids in a class and it doesn't even matter if you're in a space in the corner or trying to, you know, calm down. The environment itself is triggering the anxiety, the, you know, the, the issues that they're feeling. As a matter of fact, talking with someone this weekend who's twelve, he had said to me, he said, I was going over this at the same time that they were over. And I said, what do you think about your class size? Do you think that affects how you're feeling? And he was able to really illustrate to me how it does matter. He said, you have the class clowns, you have the kids over here who are, you know, they're, they're smart, they're answering questions and we're all kind of lost in the middle. And then I start to, he said, it just becomes overwhelming. And then I just, either I check out or I have an anxiety attack, or I freak out, or I get in trouble. The research shows that larger class sizes, despite what some at the federal level think that it's actually a positive thing, Betsy DeVos, it's not. Disruptive learning environments, behavior issues in the classroom. I'm personally interested in how much of a commitment as a district we are willing to look at what we are doing environmentally in the first place to possibly set ourselves up to have to handle more mental health issues as well. You know, we talked about identifying and screening students and most of the research that I looked into said it's almost virtually impossible for teachers, and I've heard this from them. and I've heard this from them, you know, they've said this to me personally, I can't develop the relationships that I need to develop in the classroom because there's so many kids in there. You know, one in five kids in the U.S. has mental illness issues happening. So if you have a class of thirty, right, there's five to six kids in there that are being triggered because of the environment. So I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to do some serious soul searching when it comes to class sizes. Just like the environments that we talk about on a regular basis, you know, that we, we live in, global warming, all the things that we, we believe contribute to reactions that we're seeing, right? This is not any different. And I think, I would love for the district, and I've requested this conversation to be at the board table as its own topic, but I think we have to make sure we don't lose sight of the fact that this actually can contribute to, you know, we're like chasing our, our own tail, right? We're a dog chasing our tails sometimes. If we're not willing and interested to be committed to the reasons possibly why kids are being triggered when they're in school, you know, where can we control what's happening? What can we do in regards to the environment that we have them in? And that goes as well for staff. They feel, you know, we have staff that can be triggered from that as well. So are we or are we not interested in committing to the environment that we actually are putting our students and staff into in the first place so that we maybe aren't creating more issues for ourselves? And I know that's not on you. I just want to lay that out there.
Well, it's the preventative side to what the system's approach to mental health, right?
When you talk about being proactive and you talk about, you know, you're not in the business to, just to keep putting staff into place and having to come up with all these solutions. And we don't, you know, there's not a lot of help out there for students in the first place. So we have to decide as a district if we really believe that we should look into the environment in the first place that could be contributing to and not helping. You know, we can have all these things in place, but if we're just sending them back and they're being, you know, re-triggered again and again and again. And not only are they losing student achievement opportunities, but they're losing, I mean, they're, they're lost, right?
And, yeah, and I can't speak to class sizes. But what I can speak to in thinking about trauma-sensitive schools, a lot of times those students that are tier three will get our most attention. And sometimes what staff will say, and it's just a natural reaction, is what, how do I employ these trauma strategies with that student? But our response is always, is that you first need to have trauma-sensitive classroom. Because trauma-sensitive approaches on a universal are good for all of us. That's good for all of us, and it's good for teachers too. And so one of the things I didn't talk about is this whole concept of co-regulation. So when we have teachers that are regulated, we know that students are going to be more regulated also. So that kind of gets to your question regarding the environment. Is that it really is more, it's more about that universal level. It's not just about addressing students that have mental health concerns, but it's about addressing our entire student population, supporting them. Because these practices are good for all.
Yep, and when you talk about the restorative practices, I've been hearing a lot from teachers that they're not able, because of the class size, they're not able to have those, those processes really be meaningful and impactful the way they're supposed to be. Again, because there's just too many kids in the classroom. So again, just making sure, and I was asked to talk about this because it's noticed on the agenda, that this is the one piece of information that really is a huge part of the commitment to mental health while they're in school. And that there are, there are significant issues with class sizes in relation to all of this. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Concerns? Hearing none? Laura?
I would just like to say that I, I think you should, I mean, I think you consider us all allies in, in your work.
I definitely do. I definitely appreciate your support.
And can you, I mean, I don't know who can answer this, but in the coming months, I mean, what, what do you need from the school board? Is there anything that you can say that you would like to see from us? In your, as you progress through this?
Is it wrong to say more staff? Student services staff? I was hoping this reimbursement, I was so excited about this when I saw this. And then to learn it only amounted to twenty-six thousand dollars, which isn't a full FTE, I guess was a little bit disappointing. But nonetheless, that our state has recognized the need to reimburse for the social workers and that there is some funding allocated to that, I find hopeful. So if we could, and I know other districts are, are finding funding to hire additional supports, understanding the importance of this role, I would just love it if we could do that. And I'll tell you, I was at, when we were at a panel, it was, it was a town hall meeting. And Vicky was in the audience, and somebody asked how many social workers we have. And I said, we are just so fortunate to have over forty social workers. And they said, but how many students in your district? And so when you really think about the ratio, that's not that many. So I was like, that's a good point. That's a valid point. So we're just always, if we could, particularly at the elementary, because we have, we're getting to the point that we have at least somebody in the, in the high, middle school and the high school that's full-time. But if we could have people at the elementary that we know is so important to really, again, promote those early resources and interventions, that would be so crucial. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and I know how hard you and everyone works on the team. I think about the fact that we have forty-two schools. And one person in each school is well over three million dollars. So when I think about talking in conversation with the legislature, these are big investments. These are not just a small, I'd love to have two or three or five in each school. So as, as we think about going out and, and I know the joint finance is coming here soon, and they'll have a hearing here in Green Bay. These are the kind of stories, and I know Christina, you've testified before the legislature. These are the kinds of stories that they need to hear because they resonate and there isn't. And Dr. Evers has a pretty robust, fair funding plan out there that, that some are looking at very seriously and others are thinking it's pie in the sky and it's never going to happen. So I think we need to continue to have those conversations because we're talking leveraging real resource in some of the areas, whether it be addressing special needs and across categorical dollars. So I would encourage everyone to think about how we can leverage those conversations, even in a private way. It doesn't have to necessarily be in front of the joint finance, but it may be bringing our local legislators into schools and having those conversations and seeing what's there and seeing what you're trying to address. To, to miss it, Nicole's concern and question. I think right now we're in the staffing process and we are looking and looking and looking because we want to be able to provide the lowest class size with the best environments for every child to learn. So that's, that's another part of the conversation that's going on. And I know we're going to bring our concerns forward. But, but again, because we have forty-two schools and so many children, we are in places where we'd like to have significant greater impact. And, and it's, it's a big ticket just because of the numbers. And, but every child is most deserving, so anyway, that's where I.
And I would like to thank the three of you. Vicky led us off with some very bleak numbers. And I appreciate your telling us all that you've been able to do despite those bleak numbers. And I appreciate all the, the work that you continue to do and that
Thank you.
this board really does support your
Thank you.
that's our wellness initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, we'll have lunch with you sometime.
Yes, let's do that.
Thank you.
We'll continue to talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we now have the Howe Elementary Community School presentation. Please bring everybody up, but if you have to bring your own chair. Amanda, why don't you come on up?
Well, Sarah Inman is here from United Way.
And Mary Ann?
We'll be introducing them.
And Mary Ann? All right. Mary Ann Hitchens, are you coming in for this? No?
We're just, I'm inviting all the guests with you.
Come to the table.
Okay, second presentation for tonight, an update on Howe Community Schools. I'm joined at the table with Andrea Landwehr, who is our Executive Director of Elementary Schools. You all know Amy, Principal Kay.
Kellyanne.
And Kim Shanick.
For those of you afraid to pronounce.
I didn't want to.
Kellyanne, yes.
I practiced.
And Kim Shanick. Kim, would you introduce our guests?
Yep, I would like to recognize our committed and energetic, I thought about those words a lot because you are both of those things, community partners in this planning process. We have Sarah Inman, who is a Vice President with United Way and represents our anchor partner, the United Way. And Amanda Johnson, who is the Executive Director at the Howe Community Resource Center and represents our lead partner at Howe Elementary School. Am I ringing? Is that me? So.
I have a posse up here tonight.
We do, and I would, Vicky, I'll be following up with you. Following Christina Jingles. It's like following Adam Lambert in American Idol coming up after her. So thanks, Vicky.
You're welcome.
Yes.
There, we got that out.
Right, okay. If we move to the next slide.
Kim, can you just bring the microphone closer to you?
Kim Tron.
Closer to me?
Closer to you.
Okay. All right, am I doing this? Yep, okay. I'd like to draw
You didn't move the microphone.
I didn't move the microphone.
Thank you.
Is that better?
It is better.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. I'd like to draw your attention to the definition of community schools and the key components of a community school. What you see on this slide is the national definition that we have already done the work as a planning team and localized that definition. Localizing is the work we are doing in all aspects of our planning. Oop, that went too far. Okay, where we began. Tonight, we are here to showcase Howe Elementary Community School, which has, which has been identified as the district flagship. We'd like to illustrate to the board the positive impact the, the community school concept can have on students, families, and the community as a whole. We would like to review our past work in this area, which, the work that was done in the nineties and going forward provided very strong underpinnings to be, to begin our renewed work in this area. And it's just really important to acknowledge we have two board members at least. Did we have more board members than that? That were really involved with our original community school concept at Howe? If you look to this last bullet on this slide, the community school at Howe was nationally recognized in many ways. Look at, look at that list of accomplishments that occurred out of that school and the recognition for the impact that it had on children. And we have our board member, Adorf, who was the principal at that time and led that work. And we are just delighted to acknowledge all that he has contributed to this and all that we are going to be able to build on. As we move this forward.
Before you move on, uh, Mary Ann Hitchens in the back there. She was our social worker there at the time. And along with Katie Maloney was hugely instrumental in getting all of this off the ground level or off the, you know, getting this going as well. So, um, don't forget about her.
We were fondly known as the Screaming Brothers.
And so the Screaming Mothers.
Um, while we have been working on the structural components of a local model for our community schools, the Howe Community Resource Center has been very busy, very, very busy, partnering with Howe School to develop and provide resorts, resources and supports to our Howe families and students right now. Amy?
So I get the fun part. I get to kind of describe some of the things that you see up there. I think on the bottom left, one of the pictures, it's myself and a parent and one of our children. And I think part of the blessing of being able to be the principal of Howe now is I started out my career as a special education teacher at East High School. So that is my student from East High School. And I now have the privilege of being the principal for her children, her three children. So I think when you really think about community schools and investing and knowing your families and really being a part of it, I have a unique blessing that I have some of those relationships that are already embedded. And I consider it quite a blessing to be able to serve them and their children. On the top, it's, it's a picture of some of the local beauticians, barbers that came to volunteer for our community block party. This year, we had our first ever community block party. And we had a whole bunch of resources and fun things in combination with our back-to-school night. And so our kids or anybody within the community that needed to get a fresh cut for school was able to come, and you didn't have to be a Howe student. You were able to get a nice fresh haircut or hairstyle. And so it was a really neat partnership to start out the school year. And I know that the kids and parents felt really good about being able to come into it like that. On the bottom, that is an example of one of the elective, like committees for our lunch. One of the things we were trying to do to provide extended opportunities for our children is to be able to give them options during the day sometimes that they're not able to access at night because of transportation or their parents might not be able to get them there. So we have some kids that were able to do a dance team. And they did a dance group and they were able to perform a number of times at family dinner. And Amanda was able to lead them. And the, the girls were able to come up with the dance themselves, to be able to design the practice. They had a cute news article that was featured on them. So they really did a nice job. And many of the parents are really thankful that their kids were able to participate in an activity that they wouldn't have likely been able to. On the top, that is when our kids were able to go to Camp Unalaya. So our fifth grade gets to go, we partner. And they're able to go to Camp Unalaya for two, two nights. This year, they went for the winter during the first time. So that, we partnered with the Resource Center so that every kid that went was able to have all of the winter gear that they needed to be able to go. And for many of our kids, it was the first time they were ever able to go ice skating or to do cross-country skiing or to do some of those things. And to see those kids come back and to be able to have those experiences that they have not had prior is really, really neat and really, really important for them to build some background experiences. And on the very bottom is probably one of my favorite days of the year, and it is the graduation walk. So the last three years, we've been able to have East High School Howe students come back. And they do a parade through the hallways and our kids make signs and hats. And parents are able to come and see their kids come back to Howe and walk the halls. And then we do a little send-off forum when they are finished. And we all finish in the parking lot. And the kids get a lot out of it. And the high school kids always thank and they get a lot out of it too. So just different examples of how, some pictures that I think illustrate the importance of our families and kids and communities coming together to really reduce barriers for our kids to be able to get all the experiences that they need. Okay, so this
I just wanted to say, I went to your block party this last year and none of you have lived until you've seen John Magus and the Dunk Tank. That was, I don't know who got him there, but I'll be forever grateful.
Michelle encouraging the kids over here, how to get a little closer.
Yeah. That, that was, that, that was awesome. We need to do more of that.
Yeah, we were really, we were really lucky that we were able to provide resources but fun things. We had a, a bounce house for the kids there too, and then we had a dunk tank. Maybe being the principal, going in the dunk tank before the parent thing was not the best idea. I didn't think that one through, but it worked out, it was fine. So this talks about like where we are currently. Right now, we have a partnership with Howe Community Resource Center as my, as our lead partner. So when Amanda and I work a lot together, we also meet with United Way every week. So we are really working on things at site level and trying to figure out how it looks, how it would look expanded. Right now, services that we are partnering with the Resource Center, we are able to, we have a mental health counselor that the Resource Center has there. The Oral Health Partnership is located at the Resource Center. We have parent education programs. We partner with the Resource Center for our student learning advocate position. We also have been able to provide some extended to provide some extended learning opportunities for the kids. Some other things that the Resource Center is helping us support, the block party, we did some co-planning. They help us navigate and find different sponsors and fun events for our family dinner nights. We have those every month. They helped us partner to take, help take our kids to Camp Unalaya. We are also in the midst of being able to get some really cool, state-of-the-art playground equipment. And they have also been instrumental in helping us be able to reduce a barrier by providing one-to-two mile busing for our kids and for our families. And also, I think it should be highlighted, and thanks to many of you that were a part of this, is that in February, in 24 hours, Amanda and her team helped raise $80,000 for our community schools effort. So I think that that is a huge accomplishment. She's really working her tail off, and she's a great, great person to partner with. So I'm really lucky, we're lucky.
Anything you want to add?
No, I want to again thank Mr. Dorff, and obviously, I have been in this position for over a year. And when I took over the position, I, I started the meeting with Kim in my office, not knowing what the end of that meeting was gonna, what was gonna happen at the end of that meeting, and needless to say, hit the ground running. And I hope that we are doing a little, some justice once again, so, our partnership.
Thank you. Here is where we are as the district. These are the things that we are at work on currently, and the additional points I would like to make is that we are, as a team, working hard to review and understand successful models throughout the country, models that have impact on children, on the surrounding community, on their families, and are sustainable over time. We are moving forward in a thoughtful, collaborative process, again, with our goal being to result in a sustainable, replicable model in other schools. I was absolutely delighted to hear Christina Jingle mention vision care, since that is one of my personal passions. It has been for a long time. And we were at, we are at work with a collaborative community group to do some type of pilot at Howe. There is a gap that exists. The Brown County Health Department's a wonderful partner to us, screening our children. And then there are children who fail the screening, and we have this little gap that families can fall into if their children fail the screening, but their families are not organized enough or resourced in a way that they understand their resource for getting their child to an exam out in the community. And I just really believe that a community that could solve children's dental health the way it has, where we have thousands of our students receiving their dental care in our schools, I believe this community is capable of doing something similar for vision care.
I recall you working the crowd at the block party.
It was fun, and they were really willing to do that. Let me see if I wrote anything else on this one. Yep. So I just want to loop back to that community schools definition and how we worked on our local definition for that. And two of the words that we worked into our local definition were, two of the phrases, were equity and social justice, because they were not in that national definition, and that is just such a prevailing value, both in our district and throughout the community, that we thought it was essential that that was captured in our local definition. Sarah, do you have anything you would like to add?
I think I would like to highlight, even within the national definition and with respect to what we're doing locally, in terms of an approach, another really great thing about community schools, those that are ambitious, really branch out to a broader neighborhood approach. So not only, in the case of Howe, a wonderful lead partner with respect to Amanda and the things going on directly at the school side of the Resource Center, but taking that not only whole child, whole family, but whole climate take on it. So doing some asset mapping in the neighborhood as a united way, taking a look at ways where we can help direct not only dollars, but our own staff's efforts and collaboration, with, this is an example, with Amy and Amanda and the team at the district, to look at things like safety, housing, transportation, economic revitalization within the neighborhood, or surrounding neighborhoods around Howe School, and then eventually broadening to the attendance area for East, et cetera. And these are plans that are set in stone. I'm just giving you examples of intervention-focused areas where we could look, but we need to do an assessment and get into the neighborhood first in partnership with the school and the Resource Center. So we're really excited about doing that. There's a lot of research base to it around the country and other places in the world, so we're excited to get started, in addition to the system-level work that we're doing with the district.
And thank you, because that's a nice segue into.
Yes.
Just want to, because you were talking about transportation and housing and economic development. Have you considered, and maybe you've already done this, reaching out to the city council representative of the area of the school and partnering with the city at all?
Absolutely. That would be an example of a partner that we could bring to the table for conversation, in addition to neighborhood residents themselves. So not only the parents that have kiddos attending the school, for instance, but the broader climate, which also promotes engagement with the school, whether or not you have a child there. So we're still in the process of just even mapping out a timeline for this year, because we've been really intentionally focused on the other pieces that Kim described. But that's definitely an example of a partner we could bring to the table in partnership with Amy and Amanda.
I believe there's also two neighborhood associations in that area as well?
Yep, absolutely, yeah. So we're eagerly planning and looking forward to the endeavor.
Thank you for those suggestions, and those are exactly the types of things that we are intending to do. So glad that we're thinking alike on that. Our last slide is what is up next for us, and we will be moving into the asset mapping and needs assessment, establishing our measurables, and identifying our logic model. And the thought that I would like to leave you with is, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. Do you, do you have any questions? Christina?
Yeah, thank you. By the way, I love your logic model. I just was working on a logic model for my other job, so I was just like really excited about this. So within the community schools model, right, we, we know that community engagement in a really thoughtful, intentional way is important, especially at the decision-making table, to really turn like the power structure on its head so that people really feel like they, they are being involved in the decision-making. So I think, you know, as a district, we always can be doing a better job and ensuring that we're, we're working forward on that. Can you talk a little bit about some of the things that you've learned and ways you've done that, that's worked or not worked, in ways, so that we can get a sense on how we can learn from what you're doing at a district level?
Well, I think that that's in the what's-up-next work. We have, I think we have Champions Council? Is that the, is that what we're calling? Because.
Talking about it.
Yep, you're correct, that we're, we're looking at, the, the most successful models recommend the type of governance that you're talking about, where there is this, a Champions Council that would have people that Rhonda has suggested. We don't want to predetermine, so I don't want to speak ahead to who would be on it, because that's part of what the decision-making process will do. But that is one of the components that will be with our community school model.
When you all are going through that, I'd love for you to come back and talk about that process as well. Thank you for everything that you do, all of you. It's really powerful.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Kim, to your next slide. Do I have one more slide? Oh, of course I do, yes.
Forgot the cutest thing.
I know.
Yes. So we were able to get a sign this year, so we have a marquino, and it is, we have not had one in the past. So our kids were really excited about it, so unprompted, most of our classes went out and took pictures with that sign, and then sent them to me. So I just feel really grateful and thankful that we are able to do this work at Howe, and really thinking about being proactive about how we help our kids reduce some of the things that they're coming to school, school with. And I look forward to the work we have to come, and then how we can share it to improve the outcomes for all of our kids, so.
Michelle.
I, I just want to thank all of you. When we, we began this journey, how long ago? Well, actually, United Way came forward years ago, and we had this conversation Sarah remembers, and it really takes the right synergy and the right energy and the right people coming together to really start to leverage it. And obviously, it was on point the first time it began, and had that right synergy. And people may or may not know, Amy, you talked about teaching at East High School. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dorff. I hired her, right?
Actually, I did not hire her.
Oh, you did. You mentored her.
He was my admin mentor, though, so.
Oh, when you were an administrator.
Yep, when I was in college.
Anyway, most important, however, is that, to revitalize the intent of where it began, and really leverage it forward. We couldn't do it without Amanda and the Howe Resource Center, and your board, and also the United Way, and Robin Davis, and the whole team there, and, and the United Way Board as well. And then, of course, this board was supportive of it. And then, kudos, kudos to Howe, Howe Community School, and every single staff member who's joined the team under your leadership, Amy, it's been phenomenal. And we always think you're the rock star. We, we always think you're just amazing, so.
I am privileged to be able to lead a great bunch of teachers who are really, really committed to this effort and committed to, committed to kids. And when kids are at the center of what you do, it's easy to do the work.
That's what you need.
That's it. And it's real.
I, I had mentioned, you know, Mary Ann and the role she played, and she served as, as president of that board for, how many years, Mary Ann? And, and my son, who's in, in the audience back there, actually served on the, on the Resource Center board. Was that why you were an alderman?
Prior to that.
Prior to that.
It's all connected.
He also helped with remodeling of the building. He was in there on a, on a day off from high school, tearing out all the old ceiling tiles.
Probably asbestos or something.
Hope you were wearing a face.
It's been a community school for a long time. It does, it pretty of it takes a village.
And thank you, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
We're blessed.
You should include the Howe school song.
I had to do it.
She flew the colors on her PowerPoint.
That's right.
All right, we have the volunteer program update.
Oh, gosh.
I just want to mention that also on the agenda coming up is a job description to help support the work that they're doing at the community school. Okay, lastly, we are joined at the table by Amy Fish, Volunteer and Community Partners Coordinator, who works very closely with Kim Shanick. I asked them to prepare an update on where we're at with the volunteer program, because with bringing Amy on this past, has it been over a year now?
Just a year.
Yeah. Really been impressed with her work. She was a great find. We did take her from Fort, but I think now that she's able to benefit the entire district, you're, you're going to be impressed with what she has done with that.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the time to present today. As Vicky said, I've been in my position for just over a year now, and I have been able to dedicate a lot of my time and efforts to the development of a volunteer program. What we recognized right away is that we already had a lot of elements in place for a successful volunteer program. Some of those which included, we already had an organized approach for our background checks. We knew we had a lot of volunteers already actively in the school system, working towards our district mission. And we have schools on board that are engaging with our volunteers and offering a really welcoming environment at the schools. With every effort that I implemented to further develop a volunteer program, we knew that we gained more interest in the community. We have more individuals coming forward and more community partners coming forward, wanting to step up and volunteer within the district. Therefore, we wanted to create a really solid framework for our volunteer program, so that we're better to serve both our staff and students, as well as our volunteers. Since being in this position, we have been able to identify, develop, and implement different pillars of, of our, of our robust volunteer program, and I'm going to briefly describe those tonight. The first being recruitment. In the fall, I added a, a short volunteer application to our district website, and if you wanted to click on the district website for everyone to see. The idea of adding the volunteer application was to separate those filling out from the background check to those that are actively looking for volunteer opportunities in the district, apart from those that are interested in really only attending a one-time field trip with their child. This went live in fall, the application went live in fall, and since then, in about six short months, we have had over 96 new volunteer applications filled out. When a volunteer fills out the application, the applicant can select where and under what opportunity they'd like to volunteer. For example, one of the opportunities is to be a basketball coach. So we did have an interested volunteer in doing that. Therefore, we were able to place that volunteer at Beaumont in the fall, and we started a fifth-grade basketball team there. I'm also able to connect interested volun, oh, just kidding. I've already told about that. But I also, in recruitment efforts, I receive a lot of calls from interested volunteers, that they find out about different opportunities through the district newsletters. And we also partner with a volunteer center and leverage other community partners in our recruitment effort. If you want to go back, thank you. The next would be training and onboarding, which is new this year. We will continue to offer more training and onboarding for all of our volunteers. We run a second-grade reading program called Sparks, and all of the volunteers for this reading program must attend a training prior to their placement. We also, I also collaborate in training efforts with all of our partner programs who offer volunteers in our district. There are two ways of placing a volunteer. The first is that the volunteer has a cleared background check and has expressed interest in a specific opportunity, such as Sparks, mentoring, or School Care Day. School Care Day is held in the fall, and last year, that was an opportunity where we had 75 volunteers spread out through seven schools, helping teachers and staff prepare for the beginning of the school year. The second way a volunteer is placed is staff-initiated. For example, Elmore Elementary had reached out to me and asked for 15 to 20 volunteers to help with their holiday store in December. 18 volunteers signed up for the opportunity, and we were able to deploy volunteers in efforts for that event. We also support our partner programs in trying to provide volunteers. An example of this is that we recruit and we place volunteers for our partner program, the Health and, Health Department, in their hearing and vision screenings. As you can see by my comments on our memo here, that we feel retention is another very important pillar of our volunteer program, and we will begin to monitor retention next school year. We value our volunteers and all that they give to our staff and students, and we know that only together can we accomplish our mission of every student being college, career, and community-ready. With this being said, we want to recognize their significant efforts. You can see on our district website and on social media, we post a monthly volunteer of the month spotlight, which has been pulled up right now, and they are getting a lot of positive feedback on social media. Next week also starts National Volunteer Appreciation Week, which makes this presentation perfect timing. We will continue to recognize and appreciate our volunteers in various efforts next week. Please make sure you take note of our billboards throughout the city, as they will also be recognized on our billboards. And I also hope and look forward to presenting to you, our Board of Education, some of our esteemed volunteers throughout the district for further recognition. I look forward to continuing to grow our volunteer program. I really hope that we can continue to collaborate with more community partners and more individuals, to make sure we provide excellent volunteers and an excellent service to our staff and students, as well as a meaningful experience for our volunteers. Thank you for your time.
I have a quick question, sorry. Yes. Please. Thanks, Amy. We, I know we have a number of corporate, corporate, like businesses and corporations around here that are looking to have their employees, you know, volunteer and to work in our school. So is that part of this plan for you? How do you see that growing? I know that's a partnership. I know that's a partnership question, but can you speak to that a little bit, if you've integrated that at all?
Yeah, absolutely. And I have had corporations reach out to me, and that would be part, so in the past, what I have done is that, at which point oftentimes it will happen, so say, on such-and-such date, we are hoping to send out thirty volunteers. At which point, then I'll reach out to our principals at different schools and see what kind of activities that we have, and we'll try to place them and work with them. We want to get as many volunteers in our doors, not just to serve our students, but it's such a benefit to have the community in our schools to see what the great work we're doing and the students that we're serving. Also, to that end, another recruitment effort is that we, I sign up for every volunteer fair. Oftentimes, they're held at corporate buildings, and so we do recruitment in that way as well.
Awesome. So, this can be, if a school is looking for volunteers, it could be a one-off event or a reoccurring need.
Correct. Depending on the opportunity.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm already thinking for my child's school, so.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. There's a need.
Yeah, always. Thank you very much. Anyone?
Robert.
So, kind of interesting, I had a friend who actually sent me a message tonight about any student volunteers that the district can use. Is that something that we do? Is there an age limit? I'm not familiar with that. Like tutoring, is there anything? And her daughter's sixteen.
Yeah. Yes, they, we take volunteers of all ages. The policy would be that under eighteen, they do not need to do a background check. It's a question of scheduling, I would think. We certainly wouldn't want to take a student out of school to volunteer, but.
Yeah, she's not even in this district, which is even interesting in itself, right? But, so she would contact, get in touch with you, and then see what she needs to do.
Yep, she can contact me directly.
Okay.
Something else that we're trying to do is we want to get everybody involved, and we have such a need, but something that I'm trying to do in this position is not just look outward to just community members, but realize that we have so many of our own students that can make such an impact as well. So, that's something that we're exploring, too. What can our own students do to volunteer within our own district?
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
So, I just want to say that I keep running into people that volunteer in our district with these amazing stories. And the two women who coached at Beaumont, I know them, they did a kind of, I don't think they knew what they were getting into, but once they were there, they were super, super happy about it.
Was this basketball?
Yes. They, I went to their last game, and I think I shared this with some of you, but their goal for the night wasn't necessarily to win the game, it was that nobody cried.
Did they accomplish it?
Which apparently happens with some frequency. So, that was a great event. And then also the Sparks Program, I have a friend who, Rhonda Kinchlo.
Rhonda Kinchlo.
Yeah, she's a huge, yeah, she's one of, yeah, she's, every time I see her or talk to her, the amount of commitment she brings to that and how much she loves it, I mean, it just oozes out of her. And I think the way you're growing this is just phenomenal. So, I just wanted to mention those things to you.
Thank you. I would just echo that we really do have some incredible volunteers in the district. And if you have time to take a look at some of the spotlighted volunteers on the volunteer page, some of them are just wow.
Yeah.
And it's those individual volunteers, they're the epitome of community partnerships. They just are.
Some of them come in every day. It's incredible.
Well, also, they, I mean, go out into the community and tell people how much good work is happening in our district. They're like little mini ambassadors, you know, of good news. And, yeah, it's just wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So, to get information to volunteer, they can just go to the Green Bay website?
Correct.
W W W dot G B A P S dot com. And then do they?
Dot org.
Or dot org, and then click on.
There's two ways to access it. You can access it through community or through parents. And then there's a volunteer button.
And I know that we're still looking for potential mentors for our Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, so that if someone was interested in listening out there tonight, or you hear about it and tell someone about it, if they would want to go to the website and just weigh in, you could get them to the right people, correct?
Correct. And I would encourage also, we will be holding another mentor info session in May.
Right. So, I know you're working on that as well. I appreciate all your work, and what I also appreciate is that you start to recognize not only the critical role that the volunteers are playing, but being able to extend our appreciation and gratitude and celebrate the extraordinary support that they provide our schools and our families is really something I'm very happy we're able to do.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you. All right, we have three items to discuss. Pre-kindergarten literacy resource adoption.
Actually, I was going to see if we maybe wanted to take a break for in between here? Because there's only one item on the next thing, and we've been here for.
Too long.
Yeah.
We've been here a long time, but we're holding people hostage out there, too.
Let's just keep going, and people need to take a break, they can do that.
Yeah, because there's Mary.
She's ready. Mary is ready. I was waiting to hear about the job description. Is that okay, Andrew?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
They're running to the table.
Keep coming, man.
I'm going to stand for a little bit.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to bring forward work that has been ongoing in the district for at least three years, but has really become active over the past year. This evening, Mary McCabe, all of you know her, Director of Preschool Program, and I will be sharing the process that was followed to determine an appropriate phonological awareness program, a resource, and why this is needed at our pre-K level. So, we're going to begin with Mary, and she's going to tell us a little bit about where our current status of the pre-K program is and the resources and methodology.
Okay, hello, thank you. We currently use a play-based model, and the curriculum we use is the content and special documents that were, is our district-written curriculum. Those were developed by, from three resources that we've been using all along in preschool. The Wisconsin Model Early Learning Standards are standards from the state of Wisconsin for students' birth through approximately age eight. We also use creative curriculum, which is a framework, and it covers many domains from literacy, math, physical, social and emotional is huge in our age group, reading, writing, the arts. And then, the assessment that goes along with that is called Teaching Strategies Gold, and that covers sixty-five objectives, again, across all of those domains. And it's developmental, so there's a developmental range for each age group. So, when a child, when we're looking to see if a child is proficient in any one area, it's quite a long range. So, for four-year-olds, we use the blue color band. So, we always look to see if they're at the beginning of the blue color band, that is proficient, or if they're at the end of it. And that just kind of tells us how much they've learned and how much they've grown. But again, with four-year-olds, they come in with all kinds of experiences from their families and their homes, so we want to make sure that we're developmental and that we are, and teaching them at the level that they're at, and then moving them forward. So, to do that, we do ongoing monthly professional development with all of our teachers in preschool, which includes Head Start, 4K, and our early childhood special education teachers. And that gives us an opportunity to compare and learn from each other. So, we spend a lot of time talking about creative curriculum, what we'd like to see, what we're supposed to be doing, and then also methods that they might be using, someone might be using, that might be beneficial to someone else.
Thank you, Mary. So, as part of our district's annual literacy data analysis, which the Teaching and Learning Department conducts at the end of each school year, we analyze our data, and we target, problem-solve the progress that we've made in kindergarten. And then, we look for causational factors that might indicate why we have not closed the gap as rapidly as we might have hoped to. And one piece, in the spirit of Mary's work, that we did discover is twenty-five percent of our students entering our kindergarten classrooms are below proficiency benchmark in the area of phonemic awareness. Also, the inconsistency of literacy instruction, primarily in letter identification and hearing sounds and words, which are very critical in childhood development, in learning oral language and sounds, and so on and so forth. We also have a lack of a scope and sequence at a very important level, so that we know all children entering any of our pre-K programs have the opportunity to experience the same rich play-based opportunities. We did, as Mary noted, we are very much aware of the spirit of the district and their commitment to play-based education through the, they create a curricular framework. But we also know that that framework lacks the how to do, how to teach, intentionally teach these phonological awareness foundational skills. And then, our work really led us to the last bullet, and that is the understanding, the inconsistency and understanding of phonological awareness amongst administrators and staff throughout the district. So, as part of our department findings, we then pull together multiple teams, various departments, and we have them review our findings, as well as any of their findings that might guide us or give us some insight to what might be the lack of accelerated growth in our pre-K, in our kindergarten children. So, as far as this process moved, as this process moved forward, it was determined that additional information was actually needed. What we needed is information that better helped us to understand strategies that, to use to support phonological awareness program at a pre-K level, having absent any. The length of time that it might take our teachers in order to take on and learn a phonological awareness programs, to be comfortable with that process and also the resources. And then, the professional development necessary to support a phonological awareness program. And the effectiveness, and this will be the ongoing measure, of a phonological awareness program at the pre-K level. So, as a result of our work, resources were reviewed and potential option for resolving the identified questions. In March of 2018, PK educators agreed to field test selected resources to determine the ease of implementation and identified strategies that supported a phonological awareness approach. Teaching and learning, primarily our literacy team, worked very collaboratively with Mary's team and with the pre-K teachers, who were really, at this time, just field testing multiple resources that they felt, and they recommended some. Our research teams went through and found additional resources for us to look at, look at. But the pre-K educators agreed to field test some of these selected resources to determine the ease of implementation and to identify strategies that supported phonological awareness. So, they, like I had mentioned, they worked very closely with our literacy team. Staff members met with them, observations, we were in the pre-K classrooms during the trial period, observing, and teachers interviewed. And actually, it was in our conclusion part of that stage that the educators actually made the recommendation in May of 2018 that this be moved to an actual field test and be extended as, this field test be extended as a study that would begin with the 2018, 2019 school year. They saw significant growth and engagement from students. And I believe one of our retreats, I actually brought a video clip of that, of the program that we were, that the educators are really, really excited about, actually both of them, that we did actually conduct the field test on. So, training, then, if we're going to use it for the entire school year, they really wanted to see the effects of it, starting from the beginning of the year and working through where we're at now. And so, the training was made available by the vendors for all educators and administrators around the resource use. And in October of 2018, pre-K students participating in the classroom, we definitely wanted reliable measures to know whether or not the effectiveness of a scope-and-sequence intentionally designed program for improving sound, hearing sounds and words and letter identification had a significant impact on our growth of our pre-K students. Never losing sight that it had to be in a play-based environment, much of what you saw in the video that I shared with you. It's a lot of fun, a lot of rhyming, a lot of playing, a lot of movement, but it's really done in an engaging way, appropriate for a four-year-old. We administered three sub-assessments that are administered to our children as part of our early literacy screening, those being the uppercase ID, lowercase ID, and then the sounds, letter sound assessment. So, those assessments were actually administered to every student in the classrooms who were participating in our study, as well as a control group. We'd like to, at this time, really thank our literacy coaches, the principals of Eisenhower, Sullivan, and the third one?
ELC.
They're all in the ELC, but all the ELC children are returning to their own bar and returning to their home schools. So, one piece that was a real benefit is our coaches went in and assessed the children that will be going to those schools next year, so the schools for next year have pre-K data to already plan for their kindergartens coming into their school. So, it was really a real positive win-win. It also provided for us some really relevant information. So, the student progress was then measured in October and then again in January. And the results of that October to January, I'm going to speak of it as far as gains, the average gains that students made in the number of letters that they knew before and after, and also the sounds that they knew before and after. So, the results and the resource that we are proposing to be adopted is Zouphonics. So, I'll share with you first the Zouphonics, between the Zouphonics data and also our baseline data for students who are not a part of the program or the study. So, in Zouphonics, the uppercase letter identification gains increased from four letters in October to fourteen letters in January. Very short period of time, I'm not going to make the case for all the interruptions between December and November in a typical school day, when you sit down and realize really how much face-to-face time children had with this type of instruction and engagement. We also know that it's a four-day program, and it's a half-day program. So, four letters knowing coming in, fourteen letters in January. So, an overall growth, our average students had ten letters under control. And for the lowercase identification, they came in knowing three, and by January, they had thirteen. The average student had thirteen letters under control with a gain of ten letters. And then, the average gain of letter sound recognition was eleven, coming in knowing seven, and by January, knowing eighteen sounds, which is the most complex and difficult developmental piece in early literacy, is really that training the ear to hear to the phon, to the phoning level. So, students not participating in the study, the uppercase ID, so children in our previous program, was four. Coming in with seven known letters and an uppercase ID, and by January, knowing eleven. Lowercase, coming in with six and increasing by January to ten, with an increase in gains of four. The average student then would know four of those letters. And the gain of seven in the letter sound recognition, coming in with two, and by January, nine. The same students, these same population of students will be assessed again in May for the end-of-the-year data with our regular, this is part of our early literacy screening process, and that data will be reported and a part of the Teaching and Learning end-of-the-year literacy data update. So, teachers who participated in the study presented to all of the pre-K teachers, and there's members around here that have been either in these classrooms, I know, and have visited this in action, or attended the presentation of the. visited this in action, or attended the presentation of the pre-K educators to the rest of their colleagues. It was really quite inspirational, they could be great salesmen. But both of the products, both of the resources, were presented to all of the staff members. And the pre-K educators then were asked to submit a survey on which of the resources they felt would meet their needs. Also, any other recommendations you might have, or recommendations for ongoing professional learning. So the survey indicated that of 65 respondents to the survey, 64 of them had voted for the ZUPhonics pre-K 12, or pre-K Phonics program. The other piece that was, that became very apparent in that survey is that the desire to learn more about how to teach phonological awareness. So the literacy team went back to work with committees of folks and looked at multiple formats of professional development, age-appropriate for our earliest learners and for educators who teach our earliest learners. We determined that based on the number of staff members and the support systems we have in place in the district, that letters, which stands for an acronym, Language Essentials for Teaching Reading and Spelling for Early Childhood Educators, would be the best to provide that in-depth knowledge and the tools that our preschool teachers could use. And it can be used with any well-designed literacy program. So the professional learning on how to teach phonological awareness in developmentally appropriate manner actually is outside of the resource, but can be paired and then supported with the, with the resource. So this evening, we are requesting that the Board of Education give consideration to the approval of the ZUPhonics and ZUPhonics program, phonological awareness program, and also the Language Essentials for Teaching, Teachers of Reading and Spelling Letters Program for Pre-K, with a corresponding budget of $200,035 as allowable by the budget process. At this time, I'd be, Mary and I would be open to answering any questions you might have regarding the process. The resource is still being used, both of them, by the way, are still being used, so if anyone would like to see it in action, ZUPhonics in action, Mary would be more than willing to set up arrangements and visits for you. Anyone who'd like to go over the letters assessment, what that professional development, it will be a blended model of professional development as you reviewed the budget. So the teachers will actually be in on-course, and it'll be self-paced, but then we will be, the literacy team at teaching and learning, we work in collaborative league with Mary's team, and we'll be providing the ongoing professional learning in the monthly meetings. So it's not one-time, stop, drop, and roll, it's that continual support. And where our pre-K programs are in our schools, the literacy coaches have already, already know that we are a pre-K V elementary school, and they will be supporting in, as they are now where it's being implemented, supporting our teachers in their practice of teaching phonological awareness. I just want to emphasize again that we kept with the spirit in the adoption prior of the district. We firmly believe in play-based education, which is developmentally appropriate for this age of children. But like, like all instructional practices, we're going to insert intentionality into our play-based learning. So we will have an activity, but we want to make sure that it's intentionally. We know why we're having the activity and what we desire in growth, we desire to see in our children, but that it's high ceiling and low floor, so all children can be successful in taking that on. So I promise, I will be quiet and I'll yield any questions.
It is a very impressive program to see Laura, Brad, and I were out there at the ELC, it's just...
There was a lot of movement.
Very engaging.
It was just constant movement, and it was really very, very interesting to watch it.
Yes, so I would encourage anyone, if you can have a chance to get out to the ELC, any questions?
You can come to Frabel. I have three teachers at Frabel that are piloting this, too.
I think that it would be interesting to see another teacher do it and present it. It's masterful in terms of the instruction and the engagement of children and the recognition of letters that have two sounds, and I was quite impressed with it.
Yeah, the children love it.
They do, they really do, too.
Well, they are, they're moving.
They're moving, and they're singing, and they're talking about animals.
It's very...
It's rhyming.
It's all those great foundational skills that we want to expose our youngest learners to.
And I stole some silliness as well.
You don't leave that room without a smile on your face. You want to kind of get in and do it with them. Any other questions or comments?
John, do we want to mention that a majority of this can be paid for at this year's teaching and learning budget?
I was going to add that. Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, what do you say? I'll let you ask it.
Go ahead.
As I reviewed the end-of-the-year budget, due to our excellent management of funds at our warehouse, well, I'm just seriously, this, the gentleman, Jake, seems to find gold in every pot for us because he negotiates our shipping costs, just in the savings that we've had on our shipping costs. We believe, I'm very confident, that we'll be able to use this year's teaching and learning budget to offset the cost of all of the resources that are proposed for, for you, and also the June professional training. So we were looking at approximately $115,000 that we have due to the savings that we found as we implemented our other planned programming, and also our professional development we moved into June because we had those extra funds. The only piece that probably will roll into next year's budget would be the staff members who can't attend in June, we always offer in August. And we are also including our paraeducators, who work with all of our pre-K children. I've been working with Randy on that, and they're included in the budget, that's why you see the paraeducators, and will also be trained so they can be part of supporting this program as part of the implementation phase and ongoing. So those are some pieces, I think, relevant for your decision-making. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment regarding the para.
Okay.
Watching the teacher and the para, it was seamless. Children who were in different places and needed additional support, it was seamless. And because, and it is because the para was well, well-supported in understanding what was being taught and being able to support in very timely ways. So it was brilliantly done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So how much would you say would be coming out of next year's budget, then? Do you have an estimate on that?
Well, you know, I guess what, I kind of knew from the flow of the meeting this evening that that may have been asked of me, so I did a little math back there. The only piece that I would not be able to give you accurately, and I could prepare this more accurately, because I don't know, I have the slots arranged for the June training, but we always have, we have to be flexible with our teachers in knowing if you can make the June training or the August training. So when we look at our professional development costs, it's $84,000 for the professional development cost, and that would be for the ongoing, if we have to train any more trainer-trainers. We are training right now six trainers within the district so we can better service our teachers, including Linda Teskey, who could not be here with us tonight, she's on vacation, and also four literacy coaches and Mary at this time, so we will have six in-house trainers. And anytime someone leaves, we have to make sure that we have enough money set aside that we can send them through training so that they can train others. So to make an inaccurate estimate, $84,000 is the cost of the, all of the professional learning with the paras and everyone. I would say cut that in half, and I'd probably be coming back for $44,000 because we can't carry it in after July into the next year's budget. If we could pay for everything upfront in June, we could cover all of these costs out of what we saved in the way we've implemented our programming this year.
So to your point about having, taking money and setting it aside, if you have turnover, you're going to have to train new teachers, correct?
That's correct.
So how much do you see actually taking and putting to the side? Because you'll probably have to do this potentially every year.
Well, that's the beautiful part of developing a trainer-trainer model in a district our size. We already built the systems for professional learning that are in our, that are developed in just how we do our work, our monthly meetings. We have professional development that is set aside. We will have our own trainers. So the only cost would be the $149 for the new trainers, because we'd want the training to be consistent and everyone to have the foundational parts from letters. That's going to be the critical part, and then we support that. So $149 for a teacher. For the next five years, I'd strongly recommend the district to stay very tight with their professional learning so that everyone grows and moves together. And then as our teachers take on this learning, I would think that we could self-sustain this just with our coaching model.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Sorry, I have a more question.
Okay.
So there's been some talk from some of the 4K teachers that I've talked with about eventually our state moving to all-day 4K. So how does, does this impact that potential shift in any way, like this curriculum moving into all?
I think it helps us to pay, because now we will have that intentional teaching, and now we can really expand on it. And just, you really just develop it into the all-day piece.
So it's a preparation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it actually is set up for either an all-day program implementation or a half-day program. We just simply have a half-day program, but it would take little to nothing to alter it. And then if we were going to an all-day program, we would not be back here requesting resources to fund that. But that's an excellent question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary and Nancy. Thank you so much. I would move to reorder the agenda and recommend that we go to organizational support work session, entertain the item under two, the human resources one, Andrew. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you say something, Andrew?
No.
Okay. We need to get the how people...
I feel like after four hours, we should be allowed to have snacks.
Any... We should have probably taken a break sooner, but now we're so close to it. We're so close, we're going to take a break.
Let's really...
Do yours. We have to take a vote. We have to phone on mine. Now that they're sitting here, we have to decide if we're going to do this. Sandy.
McCoy.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Sidney Cowan.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Karen Seven Zero. All right, floor is yours.
A key component across all community school models is the dedicated position of a community school's resource coordinator. Throughout all community schools' models, a site-based dedicated position is present. This team worked diligently, along with Lisa Johnson, with an existing community fund, service fund, so Fund 80, to repurpose dollars in order to support this position. It's clear, after seeing all of this working for the past couple of months, and it's evidence, evident that Amanda's not able to do both the roles of serving as the executive director of Howard, Howard, How Community Resource Center, as well as build and operationalize community school programs, services, and funds. So we're requesting the acceptance of the job description. And the team's here to answer any questions that you might have.
Vicki, can you say again what the, what you're pulling money from Fund 80 to cover this? Can you repeat that again?
It's, it's literally repurposing some of the Fund 80.
Oh, just repurposing, okay.
Yeah. Kim, Kim has a budget within Fund 80 as well as Lisa Johnson, so they work together to shift some things around. It wouldn't be an additional cost to the district.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. We'll move that forward, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, move to go back to where we were assessing.
I can hear anyone.
You had to stay anyway, I figured we could let that go.
Kim just wants me lunch tomorrow.
That's right.
Assistive technology for students with special needs policy.
Okay, and as Claudia Hendrickson makes her way up to the table, I just, first one, I thank Claudia's staff. This is really a staff-driven policy change. They requested that we update this policy to reflect best practices and what the district is doing with assistive technology. I got it going for them, and they really drafted the core of this policy. We folded in the rule to the policy language, but they then took it from there and really made the policy reflect their practices and best practices. And I, I told them at the end, I, I think they thought that every change they kept sending back to me was in some way bothering me, and it wasn't. I told them, we now have a model policy for the state for assistive technology. So I, just as some background information, the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act requires a public school district to provide special education and related services designed to meet the unique needs of each student with a disability based on the student's individual education program, their IEP. Based on the individual needs of a student, assistive technology as related service may be provided when the student's IEP team determines that a particular assistive technology device and/or service is needed in order for a student to benefit from his or her educational program. Assistive technology can exist in the form of a device or a service. Our policy was last updated in 2009, and since then, technology has evolved, as well as the manner in which assistive technology devices and services have been utilized to assist students accessing education. Claudia, do you think to add anything?
No, but I do want to reiterate that my team of, for assistive technology is phenomenal, and they're go-getters. They've got more high-tech, low-tech, medium-tech assistive technology into the hands of students and teachers, and done endless hours of training to ensure that our students all have access to the best possible education possible. So kudos to Jennifer Schuberin, let me think, Wieland, Sue Wieland, and Lynn Bolton. They are doing a whole lot with a very little amount of time.
Any questions? Thank you. Thanks, Claudia. Thank your team, please.
Then admission of non-resident students policy.
Claudia doesn't know this, but she inspired changes to this policy as well. So for our, our vision impaired programs and our deaf, hard-of-hearing programs, no other district or program offers those services and those programs to students in this area. So we enter into tuition agreements with just our surrounding districts because it's more affordable for them, and it makes more sense for them to send their kids to our program and have our staff provide that service to them. They then fully fund the program through a tuition agreement. So if the student needs a one-on-one para, they're fully paying for that para, they're paying a percentage of a cost for that teacher, whatever costs are associated with that. Our policy with respect to admission of non-resident students was last updated, I believe, in 2008. And there have been, yup, 2008. So the, there have been changes to the law with respect to not only those tuition agreements, but also tuition waivers. So when a student moves out of the district, rather than having to apply as an open enrolled student to come back in, there are various different ways that you can receive a tuition waiver based on when you move, what status you are in school. So if you are a senior in, in high school, you are allowed to stay in your school district to finish out your schooling in your home school district, and a few other things that would make you eligible for a tuition waiver. Our policy did not clearly define the parameters around those tuition waivers, and it also didn't really clearly say who is a resident and who is not a resident. So we revised the policy to reflect those changes in the law and to provide further clarity with respect to tuition waivers and tuition agreements.
Any questions, comments?
Don't even.
Let's go to Mary. Hearing done, we'll move that forward.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa?
Thank you, Melissa.
Before we conclude our report, I want to acknowledge that this is Ed Dorf's last meeting.
Appreciate your current wave. For use of service, do you have some comments?
Did we do like some sort of, like, do you run around the table and we do a high five? No, we don't do that. I don't want to get your heart rate up.
So when Ed retired the first time, I had sent him an email, and I think it really captures the work that Ed has done. We talked a little bit about the legacy with How Community School, but also the recognition that he has transformed lives at Elmore, and obviously reads, bleeds red and black as a red devil from the Fine Arts and East High. And the Fine Arts Institute is one of those places where he was a founder as well, that we can't lose sight of, and there's exciting news coming out about some... we can't lose sight of, and there's exciting news coming out about some of the success of a, a particular student. I can't reveal that yet, but you think about the legacy that you've created and the impact of all the lives of the children, and really, really transformational. And obviously, it was, was passed along now at Webster and also at Washington, that whole fine arts strand because of where you began. I think the other piece, thinking about moving forward, I think about the, the contributions around safety in our schools and the security. There, as a building principal, you were faced with something that few, if ever, would ever want to face. And Ed has a lot of notes and information and a video that I spent a fair amount of time reflecting on and looking at and trying to understand and thinking about the magnitude of responsibility that you had to undertake and support. But from that difficult, difficult journey, the district has really benefited because you took it and you, instead of making it something that, you know, was very difficult and tragic, you addressed it in a very, very positive way, as did Barbara, to really help us move forward. And, and I think the service, as you've transferred into the board and your leadership here around those important discussions, and particularly where we are as a state and with the safety grants, has been invaluable, that will go on forever in terms of policy and practice. So we're very grateful for that as well. And I also think that the piece that, that, I don't know if you remember sending me this email, I'm sure you don't, but you, you noted that you were looking forward, this was after you had retired the first time, about, and you talked about how you wanted to continue to serve and support and assist the district and the community that you love. And that has not gone unnoticed nor unappreciated. And I think about the, the pieces, sitting at the board table and how many times I've said to the, to others, the important role that you play, is the lens that you bring, that your wisdom and expertise as a school leader, and, and I always appreciated sitting here and, and listening to, to people who I have read and whose academic shoulders I've stood on, that you can articulate so beautifully, and, and because you know the work. So listening and, and the support that you've brought has been very, very helpful, I think, in terms of just the teaching and learning part. I think you've helped elevate us in a, in a better place, and for that, I'm very grateful. So as we finish, people may not know, but Ed wrote a song for his wife. Her way. And then he gave it to me, which, which I was going to lead the choir. And God bless him, he probably regretted it because I sort of tweaked it a bit, and then I, you know. Actually improved it, yeah. Well, I, I tweaked it, and then I thought, oh, I changed the song. But what you may not remember is that you suggested that perhaps someday we could be famous songwriters. So perhaps next June, when I'm wrapping up, you know, the Dorff Langenfeld, you know, you never know. Could take a song. Anyway, so thank you for what you've done. And again, I, I can't, I'm going to go back to what I wrote after you were a principal and send to you to thank you for all you've done to contribute to this successful lives of children. Thank you also for being such a champion for children and for, and this, for the district, the Green Bay area public schools. And closing, nobody has done it better. So thank you, Ed. Thank you. This feels good. I appreciate that a lot. I, you know, I, it's kind of funny. Twenty-nine years ago this month, I was sitting right about where you're sitting with my first interview with the district, and there was a, a group of administrators and board members and a couple of teachers, and went through two interviews that day. And Bob Bruke was the, was the director of elementary education, and Dan Van De Water was the, the business guy, he was on, on the panel, and David Campsir was the HR person. And they were all in one or more of the interviews, and, and then went through both the interviews. And a couple of days later, I got a call from Bob Bruke, and he, of course, he had given us a tour of, of all the schools that were open. There were seven elementary schools open. There were seven retirements, and, and later, there was an eighth. So there were actually eight of us that, that started the nineteen ninety school year. And we all, we went to the, the seven schools at the time that were open and had tours of them, and, and Bob said, give us your choices, and we all wrote it, you know, four choices down. And, and one of my top choices was Elmore, and I was able to get Elmore, and spent seven years there. And, you know, seven years later, I was sitting about where Sandy is, right after the, Dan near Ed and, and Shargearing had approached me at, at Howe and, or at, at Elmore and said, you know, would you be interested in going over to Howe? And I said, well, yeah, I'd kind of like that. And Katie Maloney, along with a couple of others, Screaming Mothers, and by the way, I did coin that phrase. And, and some teachers, they, they did an interview, and I walked out of there, went back to Howe, and I said, damn, I don't think I want to go there, they're too demanding. But in the end, I did, and I'm really glad I did, and that was, that was nine fantastic years there. And then, you know, nine years later, another interview, but it was down the hall for, for East. And every place has been fantastic, and, you know, the main thing is that I got to work with a lot of just tremendous people. You know, the, we, we do a lot of good things, we do a lot of things that we could do better, but I think one of the things that this district has really done well is hire phenomenal people. And not including myself necessarily in that batch, but when, when I think about the, the other administrators and the teachers that I've worked with, and the parents, and then the, you know, the wonderful families that I got to work with, had to work with, it really has been a, an honor and a, and a privilege. And I, I just, you know, thank the entire community for allowing me that for these past twenty-nine years. And, you know, the fact that my, my son is a teacher in the district, and my grandsons are students in the district, you know, it just makes me feel real, real good. So thank you all very, very much. It has been wonderful.
Michelle covered everything I was going to say, but I, I did want to say that Ed recently provided us with the chapter that you wrote for your Wallace Fellowship, and the, the description that he had in there. And I didn't realize this until I read that, that chapter, that Ed really was one of the first pioneers of advocating for inclusive education. And if you haven't had a chance to read that, it's really very interesting and, and well-written about why it's so important to have inclusive education, so.
You still have some of the scars from that, too.
All right, well, on that note, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine-two-zero-four-four-eight-two-zero-two-five, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.